Good evening. Good evening, everybody. We're gonna start. Welcome to the November 13th Board of Education meeting. Can we have a roll call, please?
Here.
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 Here, thank you. So our first item on the agenda is approval of minutes from the October 9, 2017 regular meeting. Everybody's had a chance to look over those minutes? Could we have a motion for approval, please?
So move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, our next item is written communication. Do we have any written communication?
We have no written communication.
Okay, thank you. So we are at information already. And the first item is recognition of state girls cross-country winner.
Yes, and come on up, Mr. Livatino. While they're coming up, so I'll try this this time and then we'll try it. We are recognizing some amazing accomplishments tonight. And we're gonna start with a true champion in cross-country. Then we're going to honor some remarkable National Merit, National Achievement Scholars. And then we're gonna recognize one of our teachers who is being recognized for the Presidential Award of Excellence in Math and Science. But before I do, I'll give this now and then we'll see how it goes. In each case, if the introducer will bring forward whomever you're, or whomevers you're introducing, and we'll get that nice introduction. And then when it's done, here's the part to listen for. Then we'll have that group, walk around, group or person, walk around the inside of this horseshoe, so all of us get to shake hands with you. And then our board president actually has one of our award-winning $1.25 pins. But actually is a real momentum, memento of being honored by this board. And it's a pin from ETHS that we give to people we honor. So you'll go around, you'll get your pin, you'll go around, shake hands, and then you can breathe easily. So we'll see how this works, but we'll start with our first recognition, state girls cross-country winner at state.
Yeah, runner-up, but yes. So thank you, Dr. Witherspoon. As I think you all are aware, ETHS celebrates its 135th anniversary this school year. And across many sports such as football, soccer, basketball, swimming and diving, track and field, to name a few, ETHS has one of the richest athletic traditions and legacies in the state of Illinois. But there are few sports, such as girls' cross-country, where we've never really quite been able to crack through to the upper echelon of success. Prior to this year, the best individual state performance by a wild kit was Stephanie Goodrich in 1991, who finished 10th place at the state finals. That's also back when girls only ran a two-mile race. A marathon of years later, it gives me great pleasure to announce that not only was that record improved upon, it was smashed by the greatest female cross-country runner in ETHS history as she ran her three-mile race in 16 minutes, 30 seconds to finish as the 2017 IHSA state runner-up in Yeva Mitchlin. To speak a little bit more on her incredible season is our head coach, Rosette Achoa.
Thank you for allowing me to be here to brag about this athlete. She has been on the cross-country team for four years, but this season has proven to be exceptional. She started the season off very strong. She won six out of her seven competitions, including the first to finish Invite in Peoria and the 47th Annual Pat Savage. These invites have over 200 runners in each event. She then went to win the CSL champion, so she is a CSL champion. She's also an IHSH regional champion. She's an IHSA sectional runner-up. And more importantly, as Livatino said, she is an IHSA state runner-up with a 16:30 personal best, which is over two minutes better than last year. So very well accomplished. Not only that, she did this all while maintaining over a 4.0 GPA and recently signing her letter of intent for the University of North Carolina. So she is officially a Tar Heel. I'd like to introduce Yeva Mitchlin.
So I didn't really plan anything, but I'd just like to thank you guys for having me out here tonight. And I think this race was really special because it was my, it was my last cross-country race as a wild kit. And you can't really beat running for your hometown and representing the orange and blue, as Coach Mitch always emphasizes on. So just really thankful and blessed to have the opportunity and hope to finish a track season stronger.
Yes.
There we go.
Gosh.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Congratulations, well done.
And next we have Beth Airy. And to keep up this high GPA run that we're on tonight, as well as another example of the brain power in this school, Ms. Airy, I think you have some outstanding people to introduce.
Oh, I thought you were talking about me. Excuse me. So yes, I do have the privilege of getting to honor several of our National Merit semifinalists. And I just want to give a brief overview of what the National Merit Scholarship Program is, and then I will call everybody up and we'll do our congratulations. So the National Merit Scholarship Program is an annual academic competition for recognition and scholarships. High school students enter the National Merit Program by taking the preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, otherwise known as the PSAT-NMSQT. Of the 1.5 million entrants, about 16,000 of the highest scorers are notified that they have qualified as semifinalists. This represents only about 1% of each state's seniors. So we have the pleasure tonight of recognizing 11 of our students. So as I call your name, please come up and just form the line there. So we have Benjamin Balmer, Annika Blitstein, Oliver Brady, Arthur Brown, Meredith Burns, Malin Clifton, Jasper Davidoff, Sophia Hatchton, Judson Kerman, James Porter, and Nathan Schenker. So those are our attendees for tonight. So if you guys wanna go around the horseshoe and receive your...
And may I just reiterate one thing? Top 1% in the nation. Just thought I'd mention that again. Congratulations. Okay, and we'll just jump right in, I'm sorry. Mr. Liebforth is coming up, and he's going to introduce one of our remarkable teachers. And notice, Mary Joy, I didn't just say math, I just said one of our remarkable teachers, but who is also being recognized for her excellence in mathematics teaching. Mr. Liebforth.
ETHS mathematics teacher, and a remarkable teacher at that, and the PAE MST 2017 finalist. Recently, on November 2nd, Mary Joy was recognized during a formal ceremony at the Fermi National Accelerator Laboratory. And we actually took her picture in front of some of Shirley Nanini's artwork, which was cool. As we all know, Mary Joy is incredibly deserving of this award. The Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching are the highest honors bestowed on the United, by the United States government specifically for K-12 mathematics and science teaching. Established by Congress in 1983, the president recognizes exemplary teachers every year. This award recognizes those teachers who develop and implement a high-quality instructional program that is informed by content knowledge and enhances student learning. Awardees serve as models for their colleagues, inspiration to their communities, and leaders in the improvement of STEM education. The National Science Foundation administers PAE MST on behalf of the White House Office of Science and Technology Policy. Mary Joy was recognized based on excellence throughout her mathematics career and for her work at the HHS Mathematics Department and in our broader mathematics community. Mary Joy has taught our cutting-edge geometry and construction course for the past five years and has worked to spread the course throughout the state of Illinois and the entire Midwest. She's an inspiration to her students, an inspiration to her colleagues, and an inspiration to me. One of my favorite things about MJ is her ability to bring consistent, positive energy to brighten the lives of everyone around her. She's the perfect mix of challenge and love that every student hopes for. Please join me in congratulating Mary Joy Honeman on a job well done.
Dale said I should say something, so I will. The last time I was here was seven years ago, when I earned tenure, so it's been a while. I'm proud to say that one of the National Merit finalists here was actually one of my students many, many years ago, so how fun to be here for that. But ETHS has been a tremendous place to work. I know I've said this before, and I'll say it again, I can't imagine working anywhere else. I am in a place where you're expected to just do more and, you know, change your craft. I'm in my fifth year doing this class, and I'm still thinking about it day-to-day. I'm my happiest letting the new ideas stew in my head and then at some point letting them out and sharing them with Matt, my co-teacher, who I'm also thankful for. That program would not be a success without, you know, the kind of relationship we have together. And I just feel really lucky that that's my day. This is my day. I come in, I build with the kids, I show them, you know, we talk about the math in our building, and that there's a lot of meaning behind that. And it is not very often in a math class that you, when someone asks, "Well, how does this work in real life?" And then my, you know, 30 other students say to the, respond to that student and say, "We're looking at plumbing today. What do you mean this is not real life?" So, you know, do you like going, you know, do you like having running water and all those things? But it has been absolutely my pleasure. Just a side note, I don't know if John Benson is watching, but if he is, he did nominate me for this award. He did win it in the eighties. And, you know, I feel, I was totally floored when he asked, or when he nominated me. So thank you to, you know, my students, thank you to all of you at the board, thank you to my boss and my department, and for my family just, you know, supporting me along the way. So thank you very much.
And now to our honorees tonight. You don't hurt our feelings if you decide you want to leave now. You're welcome to stay, but this is a nice time to slide out.
Oh yeah, you can take cookies if you want. All right. Okay, so I'm gonna do something a little different right now, just because there's something on my mind, and I'm gonna deviate just a tad bit from our agenda. So rather than going right into these reports, I'm gonna move an item up. And it's item 21B, New Business. I want to move that up because it's important for us to talk about this now because this impacts how this board works as a board. And I think it's important for us to, to think about this. We had a retreat on Sunday, November 4th, and it was a wonderful day. It was a great day. We talked a lot about how we work together. We talked about our board agreements. We talked about our code of conduct. And I knew something at the retreat about a situation with one of our board members, but I needed, at that time, I had just found out about it, and I needed to think about, think about it and how to respond, and I didn't want to ruin the retreat. I knew it was big. I knew it was important. And I needed to think about just how to proceed. So I wanted to do it in a responsible and thoughtful manner. It involves a breach of confidentiality, which is huge for a board. So I want, I want just to be very transparent and clear about this. This came to my attention on November 1st, just before the retreat. In an attempt to be clear about the timeframe, I sought legal counsel. I talked to the superintendent about how to deal with it and met with the board member. So now I'm gonna read you what I prepared for this time. While completing FOIA requests regarding the Evanstonian in a highly sensitive manner, a series of emails surfaced that revealed actions on the part of one of our board members, Jonathan Baum, that appeared to violate the board member conduct, a code of conduct that is part of our board policy and the board's trust and confidentiality. Specifically, on September 22nd, at 5:15 PM, Mr. Baum wrote to an ETHS teacher forwarding a confidential communication from Dr. Witherspoon to the board requesting deleted Evanstonian content so that he could offer advice in the dispute with the administration and calling into question the judgment and credibility of the principal. On September 22nd, at 5:22 PM, Mr. Baum again wrote to an ETHS teacher directing him to send all further communication to Mr. Baum's home email address in apparent attempt to obfuscate Mr. Baum's actions and involvement in this manner. On September 22nd, at 5:37 PM, Mr. Baum forwarded a confidential communication from Dr. Witherspoon to the board to a family member, a former editor of the Evanstonian, and directed her to respond to his home email address in another apparent attempt to obfuscate his involvement. On September 27th, at 11:54 AM, Mr. Baum received an email letter from the student editors of the Evanstonian indicating that the teacher's sponsor suggested this contact and asking for feedback from Mr. Baum. Following his pattern of obfuscation, Mr. Baum failed to report this contact to the administration and at 12:12 PM on the same date forwarded with attachments to his law firm email address. The same message was again forwarded to his law firm email address on October 10th. On October 12, I'm sorry, on October 3rd, at 9:52 PM, Mr. Baum received an email message from an ETHS teacher that made reference to another confiscated Evanstonian email messages that has been sent to Mr. Baum and indicating that the teacher wanted to keep Mr. Baum in the loop. On October 12th, at 8:59 AM, Mr. Baum forwarded a confidential email about a very sensitive matter from Dr. Witherspoon to the board, to his wife, and his son, who is attending college. This indicates a pattern of behavior with respect to forwarding and sharing emails from the superintendent to the board. On October 17th, at 10:58 AM, Mr. Baum received an email message from an individual who addressed the board on behalf of the student staff of the Evanstonian during the October 9th board meeting. This individual thanked Mr. Baum for taking the time to talk with me after the October 9th school board meeting. This letter, which also made allegations against members of the administration, was not reported by Mr. Baum. We do not know the nature or extent of any additional communications between Mr. Baum and faculty members, students, or others conducted via his private email facility. Moreover, we do not know the number or nature of other breaches of confidentiality that are suggested by Mr. Baum's pattern of behavior. We do know that Mr. Baum's actions appear to violate several sections of Board Policy 2.82, the Board Member Code of Conduct. I will read these to you. Item number four, "I will take no private action that might compromise the board or administration and will respect the confidentiality of privileged information." Item number five, "I will abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels." Item number 10, "I will strive for a positive working relationship with the superintendent, respecting the superintendent's authority to advise the board, implement board policy, and administer the district." I met with Mr. Baum and Dr. Witherspoon to review this information on Wednesday, November 8th. The following represents a summary of that discussion. Mr. Baum said that he did not regret sending the September 22nd email to the ETHS teacher, but expressed regret that he used the ETHS email instead of his private email. Furthermore, he did not express regret that he was in communication with the ETHS teacher without disclosing that information. Mr. Baum admitted that he advised the Evanstonian students on who they should be contacting. Mr. Baum indicated that he did not believe it was necessary to disclose to the board that he had been in communication with the ETHS teacher during a closed session discussing personnel. Mr. Baum did not give any indication that he will not do this again in the future. At the very end of the meeting, Mr. Baum agreed that he should have gone to the superintendent to obtain the content from the Evanstonian. Given the amount of confidential information shared in closed sessions and communication between the superintendent and the board, it is important that the board be informed about this. I have consulted with district council regarding this matter. So at this point, I'm gonna make sure that all of my colleagues have a chance to speak. So I want to make sure that everyone has a chance to speak. And if you choose not to, that's fine. So Monique.
Excuse me, may I, may I respond?
You will have a chance. You will have a chance. You will have a chance. I just, I want to hear from...
My colleagues might be better informed if they hear my response as well as your charges.
So you will have a chance to speak. So we will, we will get to you and then we'll be able to respond.
So just thinking about all this, especially on the heels of our retreat, which I thought was a very positive, very team-building, forward-thinking retreat. So this is just like off the top of my head. I'm not sure where to go with this right now, but I, I do believe that we need to figure out how to reaffirm our commitment. So that we can figure out how we work better together. So, you know, I know what the code of conduct states. We all know what the code of conduct states, and we know our board agreements. That doesn't seem to be enough, so, you know, maybe it's some sort of action, I don't know what that is. I would like to take time to think about that. What does that look like? But what kind of action can we implement either through a resolution or a recommitment to how we work together going forward? So I would like to think about that more and then figure out how to present that to the board so we can move beyond this in some sort of way and rebuild whatever trust has been broken.
Mark?
Well, just for clarity, everyone on the board got a letter late last week, Thursday or Friday, from the president, from Pat, that, you know, so we, we've had a few days to think about this. And so, you know, obviously, I get over the initial kind of shock a little bit and a little anger about the obvious, you know, breach of trust with the board. And I started looking at, all right, well, what, you know, what really happened here? What's the damage? What damage happened? And, you know, the more I thought about it, there's layers. There's different things that happen. I mean, let's talk about the administration. I mean, it appears that Mr. Baum wrote a letter to a teacher offering to help in a dispute with that teacher's boss. So we have a board member offering to help a teacher and students in, when they're in a dispute with their boss and allowing up through the administration. Now, that, that can't be right. That can't help the administration run this school and administer the district. I thought about students. You know, what message do we send to students? And I saw the letter that the student editors wrote to Mr. Baum at the suggestion of their teacher, who had already been in communication. And it seems to me that it shows students that you, you know, a wrong way to deal with a dispute with those in authority. There's a right way to wage a dispute with those in authority, and there's the back door. And it seems like we showed them the back door, which is, I don't believe that's a positive message at all, and I think it does damage. Then I think about, well, what about the superintendent and the board? I mean, what, what we want the most, among the things that we want a lot, I guess I'd say, is we want the superintendent to communicate with us clearly and effectively and in a timely manner. So if I'm sitting in his shoes, I'm gonna be cautious from now on, necessarily so. And I'm gonna have to think twice about what I disclose to the board and what I don't. And that's not the kind of healthy relationship, working relationship that we need with our superintendent. So it seems like there's been damage done there as well. I'm troubled by the, what appears to be a pattern of behavior. And if the forwarding these messages to, and directions to send things to his private email, the speed with which, many of these things, only a matter of minutes after it was sent by Dr. Witherspoon, it was forwarded to somebody else. Some of these emails were forwarded along to somebody else within a matter of minutes, as though it's kind of common practice. So it really opens the question for me is what else? What else over these last six and a half years has been improperly disclosed? And so I think as a board, the board... And so, I think as a board, the board has to decide, you know, what it can and should do about this, if anything. For me personally, I think it's a question of, I got to figure out how I sit in closed session with any confidence whatsoever that what will be, what is said or received by us in confidence will be kept indeed confidential. And, you know, the, the whole thing about confidentiality, this is not about us being not transparent. When things are protected from public view for legitimate reasons, people get hurt. The institution gets hurt. Students can get hurt. So, there is a real need to keep certain information confidential. And, you know, I thought that everyone on this board well understood that, and I'm just, I'm just really disappointed that, to, to have come to know all this information.
Thank you.
At least not now.
I'm very, very disappointed to hear this. We have a job to do as a collective, a board. We're a unit. We can, we, we do not serve the district well when we stand alone. And this just reflects the mindset of someone taking action on their own. And it does great damage to the board, does great damage to the district, does great damage to the relationship between the superintendent and the board. And as Mark said, oftentimes, there's confidentiality involved, but as it relates to the relationship between the board and the superintendent, the, the information needs to be delivered in a timely manner, accurately, from the source that we trust, which is the superintendent. And there should not be those outside of this body receiving that information when it's protected information for a good cause. Very disappointed to hear about this.
Pat?
I would just say that I think that one of the strengths of a governing body like this is that we're not always going to agree and that those conversations are, make for richer discussion and decisions. And I think that's predicated on a base of trust, that we're all playing by the same rules. And issues of confidentiality, issues of discussion around policy, whatever it is, I feel that we have a set of rules, whether they're imposed on us by law or we've agreed to them as a collective board. And I feel that level of trust really needs to be there in order for us to be effective.
Well, the reason that I wanted to speak first is because a lot of the reactions are based on an inaccurate representation by the board president of our interaction, and I want to set the record straight. I'm grateful that we are now finally discussing this in public because the conduct of a board member is a public matter, and I welcome this opportunity to account for my conduct to those to whom I am accountable, the public. We are coming up on 15 years since I began my service to this community as a school board member. I think that service has been pretty good, and judging by the election results over these many years, the public agrees. Have I made mistakes? You bet. And I will acknowledge and apologize for a couple of those tonight. But have I been faithful in the discharge of my duties as a school board member? The record shows that I have, most recently in the matter of the improper censorship of the Evanstonian. So, let's review how we got here. Last Monday, I got a call from our board president. She said that she and the superintendent wanted to meet with me in the next 48 hours to discuss concerns raised by emails that were produced in response to a FOIA request. I asked her if she would tell me what subject those emails addressed, and she said, no. We would talk about that when I arrived for the meeting. I told her I would be there. After we hung up, I realized that I had a right to know what I was being called in to discuss. I called the board president back and left a voicemail message for her saying that I should know what I was being asked about before I came in. She never returned my call. Nevertheless, I showed up for the meeting. At the meeting, the board president laid before me this stack of emails and asked me to explain them. I went through each email and offered my explanation for each one, as I will for my fellow board members and the public tonight. The board president told me that she was going to send out an email to the other board members with a report on our meeting. I asked her if she would include my response to her charges against me, and she said that she would not. On Friday, she sent her report to the other board members attaching the emails. This report contained numerous errors and unsupported allegations. I did not respond to the board president's email for two reasons. First, it would have been a violation of the Open Meetings Act for me to have done so. Second, as a publicly elected board member, it is not to my fellow board members that I am accountable, but to the public. So, let's go through the offending emails in chronological order. The first email is one I sent on my district email to Mr. Rodney Low, the ETHS teacher, who is the advisor to our award-winning school newspaper, the Evanstonian. In that email, I forwarded an email sent by the superintendent to the board informing us that the school administration had halted the distribution of the latest issue of the Evanstonian and confiscated copies of it because it contained articles that, in the words of the superintendent, quote, "glorified and encouraged illegal drug use." I was alarmed about this development for three reasons. First, I have devoted my entire professional life to fighting for civil rights and civil liberties, including freedom of the press. Second, being intimately familiar with the performance record of the Evanstonian, in part as the father of three executive editors of the newspaper, I was shocked that it might have engaged in the conduct with which it was charged. Finally, as a board member and thus fiduciary for the district, I was concerned that in confiscating the newspaper, the school might have violated a law, the Illinois Speech Rights of Student Journalists Act. In my email to Mr. Low, addressed to Rodney, as he has become a family friend over his many years mentoring my children, I asked him to send me the offending articles, which the superintendent had not, so that I could judge for myself whether they deserved the characterization the superintendent had given and offered advice. In fact, as I informed the board president in our meeting, but which she failed to include in her report to my fellow board members, I never did provide Mr. Low with any advice. In my email, I told him that I found it, quote, "hard to believe" that the articles glorified and encouraged illegal drug use. As I explained to the board president in our meeting, but which she failed to report to my fellow board members, my incredulity was based not on any doubt as to the superintendent's personal integrity, but because the allegation was so inconsistent with the long record of this outstanding student newspaper as I had come to know it. And in fact, when I read the articles in question, they did not glorify and encourage illegal drug use, much less incite such illegal conduct as required to justify censorship under the Illinois Speech Rights of Student Journalists Act. My mistakes with regard to this email were twofold, as I acknowledged to the board president in our meeting. First, I was insufficiently attentive to the potentially confidential nature of the superintendent's email which I forwarded. While I have since learned that as a properly FOI-able document, the superintendent's email was a public document which is not privileged from disclosure, I should have confirmed this before I forwarded it. Second, I should not have sent the email on my district email because, as the salutation Rodney makes clear, I was writing to him as a friend and longtime Evanstonian parent, not as a board member. I realized this within minutes, which is why I sent the second disputed email, in which I asked Mr. Low to send off further communications on this to my home email. In her Bill of Particulars to my fellow board members, the board president unfairly characterized this, as she did again tonight, as an apparent attempt to obfuscate Mr. Baum's actions and involvement in this matter. Finally, with regard to this email, I acknowledged to the board president at our meeting that when the superintendent had sent the board members only his characterization of the offending Evanstonian articles and not the articles themselves, I should have asked the superintendent to send the actual articles. For this omission, I apologize. The third email is my forwarding of the superintendent's email informing the board of the Evanstonian confiscation to my daughter, a college student, and former Evanstonian executive editor. I was sensitive enough, sensitive enough to the potential confidentiality issues that I directed her not to forward my email, but as with the forwarding to Mr. Low, I should have confirmed, as I since have, that the email is not privileged from disclosure before I even sent it to her. For that, I apologize. The fourth email is my forwarding to my work email, an email from the three student executive editors of the Evanstonian. In their email, the students provided their side of the story on the confiscation and asked me to provide some feedback on your thoughts and what you think we should do. I did not send a responsive email, although I did talk with the students following a board meeting at which they spoke, as I will discuss. In her Bill of Particulars on this to my fellow board members, the board president faults me, quote, "for," quote, "failing to report this contact to the administration. I make no apology for failing to do so." In her Bill of Particulars, the board president also unfairly characterizes this failure as following my, quote-unquote, "pattern of obfuscation." She also attributes the fact that I forwarded the students' email to my work email as yet another example of my pattern of obfuscation. She makes this charge despite the fact that I had explained to her in our meeting, but again, she failed to share with our fellow board members, that I often forward emails and other documents from my district email to my work email because the network in my workplace does not permit us access to other email accounts, so that the only way I am able to print emails or attachments received on my district email during the day is by using my phone to forward such documents to my work email. The next email in dispute is one from Rodney Low to me, to which I did not respond. In this email, Mr. Low refers to some personnel issues at the school, which, as I explained to the board president at our meeting, but which she again failed to include in her report to my fellow board members or here tonight, was something that, as a seasoned board member, I knew better than to have anything to do with. In her Bill of Particulars to my fellow board members, the board president faults me for having failed to disclose this email from Mr. Low during a closed session of the board in which the discussion was about him. In fact, again, as I told the board president, and she failed to share with the other board members, in fact, by the time of the closed session, I hadn't, I didn't even recall receiving this email, but even if I had, I would have, I would not have brought it into the discussion for the same reason I did not respond to it. It would have been inappropriate for me to get involved in a teacher's employment issues in any way. Again, I explained this to the board president in our meeting, but she failed to include my response to her charge in her, her report to our fellow board members. The next email is one in which I forwarded to my wife an email from the superintendent to the board concerning preventing the attendance at the Yamo reunion of a former ETHS teacher against whom allegations of inappropriate sexual contact had been made. While I am confident, excuse me, while I am confident that I am hardly the first board member to share sensitive school matters with their spouse, I should have first confirmed, as I since have, that the subject of the email, that as the subject of the email is a former employee, it is a public document not privileged from disclosure. Before, for failing to have confirmed that beforehand, I apologize. The final email is one from a Mr. Stan Zoller of the Midwest Journalism Education Initiative to me. In this email, to which I did not respond, Mr. Zoller thanks me for taking the time to talk with him and the Evanstonian editors after the October 9th board meeting, in which they spoke during public comment, and offers further reflections on the confiscation controversy. In my meeting with the board president, she did not ask me what I said to Mr. Zoller and the students following the board meeting, but I volunteered. I applauded their commitment to principle, but I told them that I was not going to give them any legal advice. I told them that if they wanted legal advice, they should go to the Student Press Law Center. In her report to my fellow board members, and again here tonight, the board president twists this into Mr. Baum admitted that he advised the Evanstonian students on who they should be contacting. Finally, in her, in her report to my fellow board members, the board member, the board president faults me for failing to report Mr. Zoller's letter. Frankly, that never occurred to me. I would never share a communication I received from a member of the public with fellow board members or administrator without first requesting permission of the sender. I was not about to request Mr. Zoller's permission since I had no intention of having any further communication with him. In conclusion, there was much discussion about duties of loyalty during my meeting with the board president. She said a board member has a duty of loyalty to the district and to the administration. I said that this is where we differ. I believe my duty is to the district, which is bigger than any of the individuals who serve it. It includes the entire community, students, parents, staff, taxpayers, and other concerned residents. On behalf of that community, I have always done my utmost to gather information from all available sources, to ask tough questions, and to exercise independent judgment. I believe the record shows that while I have made a few mistakes, for which I have apologized, I have discharged my duty with fidelity.
Other comments?
Yeah, I'll, I'll comment. I'm sitting here listening to that very well crafted, very complete, very thorough, and nearly intolerable pedophagery that shows me that you don't get it. You don't understand how board members are supposed to act and work together.
Other comments? Jude?
I just, I'm, I'm just, I understand the points that were being made in response. I'm fresh from the board training, and this is not what I've been taught. And we're not talking about legality. We're talking about protocol and process.
Yeah, you know, I guess I'm the same way. You know, I'm the first to talk about how we speak together as, in, in one voice. I, I share that. I always say that, and so I, I appreciate your input and, and how, and your side of how things happen. There was still, for me, there's still been a, a gap in trust in forwarding information that should not have been sent. And, and it's interesting because we set such high expectations for our superintendent, and we expect, you know, that he shares information with us, and, and we want it in a timely manner, and we want it thoroughly, and we, you know, and, and, and that's good. That's fine, and we should. I think the, the same applies to us. And I just, again, for me, trust is big. And, and I want to know that if I'm having a conversation with my fellow board members and that I don't have to repeat that this is confidential, keep this in the room. I guess I, I lead and I understand that that is to be expected of us, that there are certain things that we just don't discuss or things that we definitely don't forward and pass. So, you know, I appreciate you acknowledging those, those things that you apologize for. But for me, again, I think we need to figure out how we move forward and, and strengthen our commitment and our trust towards each other. So, that hasn't changed for me.
I guess I, I, I also feel still very disappointed in this, this whole series of events. It's just, I, I, I guess I believe that every communication we receive from the superintendent is confidential. He communicates to the board, and, and I don't want that to be compromised in any way. I think that when he communicates information to the board, there are times when the information becomes public right away or later in the day or in a couple of days because what he's telling us is information that we need to know, and sometimes things are still being worked on. So, I have to trust that process. And, and again, if I have questions, I go directly to the superintendent. That's, that's important. So, Gretchen, do you have your hand up? Oh, okay. So, I, I, I know that some of this has been said. We, we have some, I think, questions about our, the way we work together, the trust, and... And, and I, I think it is important for us to reaffirm our commitment. And Monique and I will work on pulling together some type of formal statement when we meet next to make sure that, as a board, that is reaffirmed. I think it's important to me how we work, how we function. And the fact that we, we need to function with a level of integrity is, is huge. So we'll work on some kind of resolution or document. Gretchen?
Sorry, I just, I wanted to hear, in addition to reading the email, Pat, that you sent around earlier, I, I wanted to hear Jonathan's response and, and also whatever comments the rest of the board had to say. I have a few thoughts in no particular order because I haven't prepared remarks. I wanted to sort of take things on tonight. First, I will say that as to, I think, two or three of these emails where Jonathan forwarded messages to family members and wrote an email to a teacher at ETHS, I don't think that was a great move, regardless of whether the, the email themselves were technically protected by law in a way that made them nondisclosable under FOIA or in any other way. So, so I don't think those were, those were good moves. But I also want to draw a line because I think there were a, a series of emails that Jonathan received. I don't think there's much you can do when you receive emails. You have a school board address, and it's there so the public can reach out to you. You know, the only analogy I can think of is, you know, if I were to stand out in front of my house every day, and when I saw the postman approaching, I would hold out my hands and say, "Halt." And given how late my postman shows up, how irregularly, that would really be trying. You know, and there, you, you just, you can't do that with your school board email, and I think people can appreciate and understand that. So there's, you know, I think some sort of claim that we don't like the fact that people are writing to Jonathan is, is, you know, there's not much to be said there. I, you know, I'm also going to say that I was surprised to hear, Pat, you say, a short while ago, and I, I don't think I got this wrong, that everything we get from the superintendent is, is confidential. It's not. And that's the lawyer in me coming out here. I'm, as this whole board knows, because it's come up on more than one occasion, I'm a stickler for the law, I'm a stickler for the Open Meetings Act, and I'm a stickler for FOIA. And it is not the case that every email the superintendent sends us is confidential. Many of them are, and they are frequently marked that way. And there is, for example, such thing as attorney-client privilege. But that doesn't mean, as a matter of course, that, that everything he writes is confidential, and, and it goes both ways. That doesn't mean that everything we write to the superintendent is confidential either. That's why we have the Freedom of Information Act, so that as a public body, which expends public dollars, when we have communications that are not subject to the very, very limited exceptions under the law, the public can access that communication. And, you know, we, we actually, I thought, had a good discussion and segment of that point during our board self-evaluation session with an expert from the Illinois Association of School Boards, who I think did a good job of clarifying that. So, you know, I, I just want to be, I'm, I'm trying to, and lastly, the other thing that I, again, I said no particular order here. I, I think we need to be careful to stick to a factual discussion. You know, I, I don't take away that this is surprising and upsetting to many of you, and there are aspects of it that I'm not crazy about either. But I think it doesn't serve things to go further than you need to, where we talk about apparent attempts using language like "obfuscate" and, and sort of repeating that. We know what we know, and I don't think it's fair to anybody to make up what we don't know just because we don't like what we do know. And, you know, I get that part of that is the, is the trust factor. So, going forward, I think we have a, a very dynamic set of board agreements already, and we talked about ways to revise those during our board self-evaluation session. So I, I, I hope that we get those revisions and any other changes that you're recommending. But I think it's important, you know, to, to make sure we're on the same page with the existing agreements. And I, you know, going back to our board retreat, we had a discussion around speaking with one voice, because you may recall that the Illinois Association of School Boards has recently deleted from their guidance documents that speaking with one voice in language, not because the idea of speaking with one voice is not important, but because it had been misinterpreted to silence individual voices. And I think our facilitator from the IASB did a very good job of clarifying that when a board member has a dissenting point of view, they still have the ability to articulate that dissenting point of view when asked. They still have an obligation to uphold the decision of the school board. But as we should all know, the rights of free speech allow one to articulate that point of view. And, and frankly, we've seen recent examples where that's been necessary. And members of this board, I, I can look at most of you except for the two newest, of course, have all exercised that right on various occasions. And I'm, and I'm proud of that, and I think that's a sign of a, a functioning board. Just because it's uncomfortable, we don't like it, doesn't make it wrong. And, you know, we, we talk a lot about being able to accept some degree of discomfort. Well, I've been on this board nine years. It's been a whole lot of discomfort at various points for a whole lots of different reasons. And I, I think, you know, we're going through that point with new board members where we're learning how to come to grips with it. So I've just tried to lay a couple of things on the table that I think we need to remember, be conscious of, and hopefully we'll be able to find a way forward.
Sure.
So since I brought up the recommitment or reaffirmation towards the, the board agreements and conduct, I'll just add that it means absolutely nothing if we're not committed to them.
Agreed.
So if we're saying on paper that this is fine, this is how we operate, okay, fine. But if we're not living that, then it means absolutely nothing. And it's very hard to trust that, or to say that we have good stuff, which we do. We have, we have, we have very clear conduct codes and agreements that, as you stated, we revised or should be revised. But if we don't agree to them, then what's the point? We can continue as is. And, and I absolutely have no problem because, you know, I'm the first to, to state my disagreement on things. But I'm also committed to making sure that what I say and my commitment to being a school board member is felt and it's meant to be done with strong integrity. I don't, I have a, I have a real hard problem with not doing what we're supposed to do, or holding our responsibility and saying that we are working together in confidentiality and sending something. It's, you can disagree all day long, but forwarding something is totally different than, than stating a disagreement. Sending something and not being clear or not being transparent in what's being sent is totally different than, than not agreeing with an action. So, you know, I, I'm back to the code of conduct that we're supposed to hold ourselves accountable for that apparently has been ineffective.
So I, I, I agree. I think that I expect people, board members, to express their opinion. Gretchen, that's not at all, I, I have no problem with that. In fact, it is our responsibility to do so. And, and we are different. We have different experiences. And so I would hope that there would be times when we would have different perspectives, different opinions that we would need to talk through. I, I, I still believe that information that comes from the superintendent should not be sent and forwarded. I, I, I think that compromises the process that, and I, and I really will state again, I, I don't want Dr. Witherspoon to wonder where his emails are going to land and when. I think that's, that is very inappropriate for, for a board member to do that on a regular basis. So I'm, I'm going to close this because I think we could kind of go on here. Certainly, this is an example of having different opinions, and, and so here we are. When we come back at our next meeting, we will have the information from our retreat where we did some, made some revisions to our board agreements. So we'll have that. We'll talk through that. And, and we'll talk some more about this issue. And if, if there's something that we need to put together to reaffirm our commitment to working in a framework where we can trust each other, then I think that's very important for us to do. So I am going to move on with our agenda. Thank you for being patient with us. We are at item number nine. We have a report on student achievement and the school report card.
And that's Dr. Bavis and Dr. Levy, and they're on their way up.
Okay, let's get started. Today's update is the annual achievement report. It's not the umbrella, it's not under the umbrella of the work done by the Northwestern Evanston Educators Research Alliance, or NERA. That is still a work in progress. Instead, this is a look at how our data balances up how it, against the indicators in the ESSA State Plan. Please understand that the indicators related to college enrollment or persistence, again, are outside the scope of this report. So you'll see as I go through the ESSA State Plan, the academic indicators identified by the Illinois State Board of Education are laid out as a series of conditional statements. We're looking at students to meet, you know, who have a GPA of greater than 2.8 and have 95% attendance and meet at least one of the language arts indicators and meet at least one of the mathematics academic indicators. I'm not here tonight to argue about the validity of these measures, to predict student success. Instead, we're here tonight to provide an intermediate analysis of these measures. Here you see the English Language Arts Academic Indicators. What they say there is that every student to be, you know, you have to meet one of these. You have to take the English Language Arts AP course, which is Language and Composition, or AP Literature, and earn an A, B, or C, or to have an AP exam score of three or higher on those specific exams, or on the reading and writing subject test, the ACT, SAT, rather, score of 480. That's the state determined benchmark, not the college readiness benchmark, if you want to get even more into the weeds. And our ACT English subject score of 18 or higher. So, and the reading score of 22 or higher. So you see there's a series of conditionals, and right off the top, if you don't take an AP English class, you're at a distinct disadvantage. In math, it tells a different tale. You can take Algebra II, earn an A, B, or C. Most, almost all of our students take Algebra II as part of their math sequence. Or you can take a Mathematics AP course, earn an A, B, or C, and so on. And you see the SAT math test of sub-score of 530 or higher. Again, that's state determined, that exceeds the college readiness benchmark determined by the College Board. Or you can meet the ACT math subject score of 22 or higher. I'm going to turn it over to Carrie, and she's going to walk us through the methods used, and then we'll talk about some scores. And then I'll do a brief overview of SAT scores, and then I'll finish up with our equity and excellence numbers for our senior, for our graduating seniors last year.
Okay. So for this part, we looked at two cohorts. This table is just explains the four-year graduate cohort from 2016 and 2017. Just understand that last year, we have some five-year graduate data for the four-year cohort. So it's really, sometimes it's a four-year, five-year, it's just to understand that basically we have a 2016, 2017, five-year, a four-year cohort. This table, the way we look at this chart, so this is the percent of students meeting or exceeding these college readiness benchmarks as identified by the Illinois State Board of Education. So the way this chart is read, we have, starting on the left, the percent that have met all four of the benchmarks that Pete just listed, the GPA, attendance, one of the English language indicators, and one of the math indicators. And then we have the percent that met three of the benchmarks, the percent that met two, one, and the, on the far right, the percent that met zero. The red bar that goes across with the percent on top is represents the percent that met three or more. So overall, in the cohort, the cohort from 2013 to 17, 63% of all the students met three or more of these benchmarks. And a similar chart for the cohort, the 2014-17 cohort, 65% overall met three or more of these benchmarks, of those benchmarks that were identified. When we start to pull apart underneath, and we look at the benchmarks separately, the percent of students with a GPA of 2.8 or higher, on average, at least 60% across both cohorts, met that, had a GPA of 2.8 or higher. This is a fixed point. So one of our, one of the things we will be doing, looking at when we work, work with NERA and the analysis we're going to do with NERA is to look at the best GPA cut. This is one that's identified by the state, but we do not know if that's really the best one for our students and as we look forward in college persistence, and how it relates to college persistence. Next, 95% attendance throughout school. So this is across all four years, or even five, the average, the students met 95% or greater attendance. So 69% of the 2013-17 cohort, 74% of the 24-2017 cohort. Our average daily attendance for ETH students is and has been for a while 95%. And again, when we are work with NERA, look at the, we'll incorporate attendance into our analysis and identify the best threshold. All right. Looking at the English Language Arts, and again, just a reminder, that's taking and earning an A, B, or C in one of the AP English Language Arts courses, getting a three, an exam score of three or higher on the AP exam, and meeting either the ACT or the SAT benchmarks, meaning one of those. So two-thirds across both cohorts, two-thirds of all students met at least one of those English Language Arts indicators. And in math, the math ones, again, And in math, the math ones, again, to repeat what Pete had said, it's taking to Algebra, earning an A, B, or C, taking one of the AP Math courses and earning an A, B, or C, earning an exam score three or higher, or meeting one of the SAT or ACT college readiness, the benchmarks. And we have 78% to 80% of the students, all students who met at least one of those math indicators. Next, the, looking at the percent of students, so in the, um, ESSA plan, looks at percentage of students with, not ESSA plan, the behavioral referrals. So zero behavioral referrals across their time at ETHS. For the 2013-17 cohort, it's 43% of all students had zero behavioral referrals. And for the 2014-17 cohort, it's 55% that had zero behavioral referrals. And referrals turn into actions. They include conference with the dean, or parent, conference with social worker, detentions, alternative suspensions, suspensions. So referrals turn into a variety of actions. And I apologize, these are relating to Board Goal Two. Uh, social, emotional well-being, or well-being. Another, um, measure under Board Goal Two is the percent of students participating in one or more extracurricular activities. So at least 82% of, 82% of all students participated in at least one extracurricular activity. The report card, um, we always report our graduation rate. So this is in the report card. For the class of 2017, the four-year cohort, 92% last year graduated within four years. So that's up from the previous years. That's been moving up. And the class of 216, 2016, um, five-year cohort from 2017, last year's five-year cohort, 93% of the, initially, the 2014 five-year group has graduated within five years. Again, that's been ticking up a little bit each year. You wanna talk about SAT?
Uh, I'm just gonna provide a brief overview of our baseline SAT scores. And along the way, I'm going to talk about how ISB has defined new cut scores for the SAT for meets exceed state standards and how those cut scores are higher than the College Board's National College Readiness Benchmarks. So there's some confusion there. So my hope is to complicate everyone's thinking. Uh, here you see our ISB baseline, uh, SAT data. Uh, in English, uh, this is just the broad, very broad, like, looking at how, what percentage of students met the college readiness benchmark in English Language Arts and, oh, not college, I'm sorry, the ISB benchmark, uh, in English Language Arts and in the state, versus the state. Uh, and you also see that in math. So we're doing, um, our baseline, again, this is baseline data. And we're gonna treat it as such. But what I wanna do next, um, is really draw our attention to this chart. Uh, what we have here is the ISB SAT meets exceeds on the left compared to the college readiness benchmark defined by the SAT in a national set. So according to the state, it's possible at Evanston Township High School that 86.9% of white students met or exceeded state standards. Uh, but, uh, along with that, 96.1% of white students are deemed college-ready by the SAT. So, overall, um, 73% of students met the college, college readiness benchmark in reading and writing, and only 57% met the state benchmark on the same test. So this is the same test. It's just two ways of cutting the data. If we look at black African-American students, 26.4% met the Language Arts standard established by the state. But on the same test, 55% met the college readiness benchmark. And the college readiness benchmark established by SAT is is the same, similar metric for the ACT. They look at students and they say, do you have a 70%, uh, 75% chance of getting a C or better in your freshman college course, uh, in English? Uh, or do you have, and a 50% chance of getting a B or better? So that's how they establish their college readiness benchmarks. Uh, the jury's still out on how the state did that. They got a panel of folks together and kinda just looked at the test and said, yeah, these look pretty good. That's the best I was able to get. Uh, and obviously, it's a higher benchmark. So it's something to keep in mind as we go forward and report on this. We'll be, uh, you know, we'll be reporting, uh, the meets exceeds, uh, along with the college readiness. Because, I mean, it is a little bit confusing to be able to be college-ready but not deemed meeting standards in the state of Illinois. And we could have several students, uh, quite a few students, actually, uh, in that situation. And if you just wanna look at how, uh, this is just looking at the ISB baseline data. We're back to ISB now, and we're looking at how ETHS students did, uh, on that state-established benchmark, uh, meets exceeds compared to the state. So, uh, finally, this is the last year I'll be reporting on this in this fashion. I'm gonna do the rigorous, uh, measure of equity and excellence, which I can't take credit for. I lifted it from the Montgomery County Public Schools several years ago. Uh, this is, these are, again, for graduating seniors. So the graduating seniors last year did take the ACT test. Uh, so what we did was we looked at ACT scores of 24 or higher. Uh, that places students in the top quartile, 75th percentile of ACT test takers nationally. And we also looked at AP scores of three or higher. And that means that students have proved themselves capable of doing the work of an introductory-level course in a particular subject area. Again, I lifted these definitions right out of the Montgomery County Public School reports. Uh, and here we see progress. Uh, percent of ACT scores 24 or higher, again, this is the last time we're gonna be reporting ACT scores of 24 or higher with a large cohort. Uh, you see our trend lines, uh, there. Disaggregated by race. And then if we look at scores of three or higher, uh, this is of all the seniors. In the senior class, 77% of white students earned a three or higher, 46% of all. This isn't just the students that took the AP test. This is of the entire group. So 46% of, uh, our Latino students and 19% of our African-American students. And you'll see that if you go back, uh, that all, that all of those lines, uh, if you go back to 2011, have been trending up. We did have a, uh, a slight dip last year. We had a dip, and then we bounced right back up in our reporting. So, uh, now, I'm sure you have a bunch of questions on this report, as it is the first time we've reported on the ESSA and it's the first time we reported on the SAT. So, uh, at this point, uh, we are open to questions.
Questions?
Thank you, guys. Peter, what do you attribute, or what do you all attribute the dip to? 'Cause all, all groups, all three demographic groups dipped.
Yeah, last year. You, you know, I, I don't, I don't know. It was a year, that, that could be two indicators. One could be that participation was down. Uh, I believe there was a participation dip last year as well. Uh, our percentages overall of students who take AP tests has remained constant. Uh, so that's probably, that's a dip in overall, uh, participation. But we've rebounded.
Yeah, and let's reiterate, this is the percentage of all students in the class, not the percentage of all students who took an AP class.
Gotcha.
Or an AP exam.
Thank you.
The percentage of students who took the AP exam that got three or higher is way higher. But when you take it against everybody, 'cause not everybody takes AP, uh, it, it changes the ratio.
Yeah, let me, let me give the overall, uh, for the seniors who walked across the stage last year. 52% of last year's class met the ACT standard of 24-plus and 53% met the standard of an AP score of three or higher. Uh, that's of everybody that walked across the stage, so about half in both, uh, half the students who walked across the stage.
Thank you.
Other questions? Pat?
Thank you. Um, thank you for this report. Um, just a couple of nitty-gritty questions and then a broader question. So, um, specifically on the post-secondary remediation, do you remember, do you know how that's measured? 'Cause that, to me, means they go to Oakton and take remedial classes. So is that something you have data on to measure, or?
That is what it measures.
Okay.
Uh, it measures the percentage of students who go off, uh, to Oakton and take a O-level course. Uh, we hope to see that number go down, because last year, we started for the first time our, uh, Math Pathways early college courses so that we could remediate, uh, a lot of the, the math needs while students were still in high school. So that they could enter Oakton, students could enter Oakton, taking credit-bearing courses. We'll do a broader report on that. Uh, we have an Oakton Partnership Report coming up, but thank you for raising that. Yeah. Again, it's only the students who go to Oakton. It's not all students who go off to college.
And then, um, there was a number of students not tested. So does that mean that they didn't take either test? They didn't take the standard tests as well as the tests, um, for special education students? Sorry, it's on page, uh, 28, 29 of the board report, which I think is nine or 10 of the, nine and 10 of the.
So there are many reasons for not tested. There are students who are absent. There are students who are homebound, hospitalized, medically exempt, um, out of state, out of country. And so that represents students from across these, um, handful of, of present but refuse to test. If that's what that represents.
Got it.
So some may have been, a handful may have been presented the test, chose not to, others, for a variety of reasons, were not able to test in the window that was given.
Thank you. Um, and then my last question is sort of a broader question, which you've addressed to some extent. But is there a story here, either a good story, bad story, or some of both, that this data isn't telling us? So it seems like this is pretty specific. Um, Pete, you raised the issue of the state versus the College Boards, um, you know, cut scores and so forth. So I'm just wondering, is there a story here that we should be thinking about? That, again, it could be a good story, a bad story, or some of both?
So, so I have, I have a couple of things. One, one is that this is, uh, baseline data. So when we look at baseline data, we always look to improve upon it. Uh, so I, I have every reason to believe that that 40-year chart that we have for the ACT will begin to grow our SE, SAT data in the same way. So, so I see that as a hopeful story. Um, one of the things that this data allows us to do when we do a deeper dive, and I'm gonna talk about this, uh, later, is, uh, we can really look at subscores on the SAT test that can then inform instructional decisions and decisions around the curriculum. And I'm gonna talk about that a little later, uh, when I talk about new courses. So that's, that's a hopeful story. Uh, time will tell, uh, as, as the SAT becomes just how we do business in the state of Illinois, how, as part of what students do, uh, I think we'll see, uh, greater and greater scores. Uh, the jury, you know, in terms of this, uh, baseline, uh, data, looking at ESSA, uh, one of the things it's important to keep in mind is that we're looking at students that met all of these. So we'll go back to this chart right here. Uh, 65% of the 2014, 2017, you know, met three or more, 48% met all, five or whatever it is. It, it, once you add conditionals, it's a series of ands, so it becomes a series of filters, and we've talked about this before. Uh, and it's how many students make it through every filter. Uh, that's when you get the meets all. Uh, that's why we chose to look at how many met three, how many met, uh, four, you know, how many met two. So again, we'll see this reported by the state. But again, it's all baseline. And it's a new way of reporting information, and we wanted to preview how that, uh, could potentially play out when the state reports it next fall.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Yeah. Peter, I think this came up before, uh, when we had the, um, the, our last board meeting with District 65. But just as, to keep in mind as an indicator, because, like, for the first-generation college students, exposure would be huge. And awareness. And, um, you know, so there's a, a, a level of that that we do here within the school. But just to, to consider the fact that many students don't have that same level of exposure coming in to the district. And, um, of course, studies show that the more exposure that students have, the earlier, the more likely it is that they will attend and finish college. Just to make sure that we give support to those that may need a little extra exposure.
Absolutely.
Carrie, I, I just was gonna ask about the, um, student well-being, um, data. You, you said something when you were going through it about, um, I know that one measure for the goal is 100% of the students don't receive a behavioral referral. And then you, you talked about the kind of, um, interventions they had. And, and, um, can you just review that for me a little bit? Do you know what I'm talking about?
Yes. So I was talking about, ref, so this, um, piece of data looks at referrals.
Yes.
But not, it's referrals, but not, referrals turn into actions. And actions are a wide range. It's com, that, and that's why I was just listing a handful. Could be conference with a parent and a dean, conference with a parent and a social worker, conference with a parent and a teacher, detention, um, right of things, up to the more, um, disciplined with actions, which are suspensions, alternative suspensions. So I, I was just, um, just trying to make a point that this is referrals, not actions.
So referrals aren't necessarily like this horrible.
No. That's all I was implying.
So, I, I, I'm glad you raised that.
Yeah.
You know, when we look at all students, 2014 to 2017, 55% of that cohort, uh, received zero behavioral referrals in their, in their, in their time at ETHS.
Over four years.
Over four years.
Over four years, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, thank you. Jonathan?
I had one comment and one question. On one of the earlier charts, which is the, um, percent of cohort meeting or exceeding college readiness benchmarks, I think that that underscores the importance of what we did in our last set of goals. Because if you'll see, the, the two groups, uh, that are the lowest are low-income and IEP. And I think that, um, suggests that we, we did the right thing by adding, uh, to our goals a concern about predictability of achievement based on those characteristics as well as on race. My question is, Pete, could you go back to the slide about, uh, the one about ACT scores 24 or higher? Okay.
It's near the end.
Okay. So, my concern, my question is, you know, this covers an extended period. A lot of the data in here are just two years, but this is six years. And we've been doing a lot of things in, in the last six years in order to reduce the racial predictability of achievement. We've restructured, we've worked with the Pacific Education Group, we've, we've done all sorts of things. And as you look at those numbers, does that suggest to you that we have made any significant dent in the racial predictability of achievement?
You know, I think I'd have to look at distribution scores underneath that to determine that. Um, I know that if we look at scores of 27 or higher, we have seen significant growth. Uh, at 24 or higher, uh, which is the 75th percentile, I haven't seen it. But if we look across the range, we'd wanna see a shift in that. So I, I take this as one, one marker along that. It doesn't really tell us the distribution.
One of the things that we're going to, uh, do a little more analysis on is what are we seeing the starting point in the ninth grade? What, where were the ninth graders who came in in 2013 compared to where were the ninth graders who came in in 2016? And what happened to them after that? Uh, we have some preliminary data, and I think it's gonna be very interesting.
We can also answer questions about the report card as well.
I have a question.
Great.
Um, just a small question. The, um, back to the first set of slides, um, on the attendance, the chart that shows a ten, percent of students by subgroup who are in school 95% of the time or more. I thought this was really interesting, and, um, I'm just wondering, you may not be the best people to talk about it, but I'm just wondering, um, it seems to me obvious that you're gonna have a better chance of success that you're actually, if you're actually in school as opposed to out of school. Um, and so I, I'm sort of surprised that these numbers are as low as they are. numbers are as low as they are. Although, obviously, our students miss school for a whole host of reasons. So I'm just curious about your, your take on this. You know, that in some cases, we're hovering above half of a subgroup who were in school ninety-five percent of the time, more than ninety-five percent of the days. It's a little hard to, you know, do all this in your head. And, and I guess my point is, what are we doing to get that number up? Maybe that's the...
So ninety-five percent is a very high bar to like typically measure.
Okay.
So first of all, we have to acknowledge that. We have to acknowledge that students who've met that bar, that's, that's pretty amazing. When you break that out by semester, what you have to do. We, you know, we, we've done a variety of things to address attendance. I think part of the, the, the work we're doing on well-being, the work we're doing on belonging, creating safe spaces at the school has increased attendance. Our average daily attendance, though, not to lose sight of that, is ninety-five percent. It's just, it's the old, it's not the same ninety-five percent every day.
Well, exactly. So it seems to me it's the ones who are not hitting, or her, not, not only not hitting, but are furthest from it. So then, I guess, the question is, what are we doing to get at that and figure out why they're missing and identifying it? Because, again, obviously, a whole host of reasons. There might be the kid who has gone on several college visits to Ivy League schools, and they're competing in international math competitions and debate tournaments or something, right? That's a different kind of missed school than somebody who has a chronic health condition that means they're out of school a lot, or mental health issues or some such.
Yeah. There's, there's a ton of stories underneath this.
Yeah.
Hospitalizations fall under this. But really, what we'd again have to look at underneath this is, hate to go back to it, but what's the distribution? If, if people are falling within the ninety to ninety-five range, if that's where the vast majority of our kids are, are hitting, that's not necessarily a bad thing over four years. The other piece to consider is, you know, what, what are the relationships like for students who are chronically truant? I mean, that's really where we have to shift our, our focus.
I would add, this is definitely one of the things that we want. So this is across all four years. So is it different by one year, freshman year? The state is going to look at junior and senior years specifically?
But it's really freshman year that may matter more than anything?
One thing to explore, right? So we, so this is one of the variables that we will explore with the nearer in the analysis in kind of putting all of the data together to look at a sort of a whole, you know, big picture of students. Where does attendance fit in? What is the threshold? Is it, does it matter? Non-attendance is non-attendance. So there's a lot of questions to pull this apart in a way that we've never pulled it apart before. But exciting to pull it apart and figure out what it means.
So here's what the benchmark means in one year. It means that you missed fewer than nine days over a school year, which is four days, you know, four and a half days is five days a semester, which...
Four days a semester.
Four days a semester.
Four days a semester. And what, what's our policy on missed days before you get an incomplete or something?
Nine.
Nine, right?
A semester.
A semester. Interesting. Okay.
Yeah, it is a high mic. Did you say we could talk about the school report card on, on this? I just wanted to highlight something because I think it, it, it supports why we're engaged in a major school initiative, which is, there's a section on educational environments for students with disabilities. And for almost every single category, and particularly acutely for, for autism, and it shows that the percentage of our students with disabilities who are in a separate facility is significantly higher than with our peer districts and for the state. And I think that's, you know, people want to know, why do we want a day school that's down the street from ETHS? And that's the answer right there. I mean, so I just wanted to highlight that.
Exactly right.
Right. That's exactly right. All right. Well, thank you very much. Great report. And our next item is Pete, Dr. Bevis, proposals for new courses, course changes, and course deletions.
Okay, and off we go. This is our rapid chart that we use when we put this out for teachers and department chairs and for the board. You'll see that teachers with department chairs develop initial recommendations, department chair endorses course proposals, agree, you see who has to agree. We go to CFL particularly for new courses, for financial implications. I sign off, agree to move things forward. If approved by the Board of Education, teachers with department chair develop curriculum and assessments for a course. We get input from teachers, department chairs, administrators, curriculum forum, and finally, you, the board, decide. And you will vote on these proposals in December. All right. So here's a little background. ETHS offers over two-hundred-and-fifty courses spread across departments. In the past four years, we've added thirty-six new courses in four years, and we've revised eighty-six courses. We will not, we will be considering course changes for next year, but we will not be adding new courses for eighteen, nineteen. Why? Because we're going to do a, we've started to embark on a curriculum review that will look at not just data points, student achievement, department GPAs for students, desegregating student data by race, but we'll also be privileging student voice in that process. We're also going to work with colleges, and we've already partnered with NU on some of the focus group work we're going to start rolling out second semester so we can get broader input on our courses and on our curriculum within different departments. It's a multi-year process, but it's kicking off this year. That'll then inform, the idea is that that will then inform new courses, course development, we'll be able to assess where the gaps are in our instructional offerings, and we'll be able to use that to inform future practice. Relevance, course changes are important because they address District Goal One. And let me remind everyone tonight that the purpose of all course changes is to improve student achievement, clarify prerequisites, and pathways. This year, unlike past years, I only have ten revisions of existing courses and one course deletion. Some highlights, we have an introduct we're offering, we're proposing and doing a section of the Introduction to Computer Programming for self-identified female students. This is similar to the Introduction to Engineering Design that we offer as a, to self-identified female students. The idea is to, to have more female students in the engineering and in the computer science pipeline. Again, it's not a new course, it's just a section that students could opt into. We also have a revision to a Geometry Regular Course and to a Pathway to Honors Course. It's similar to the work we've done in Geometry and Construction. And I wanted to take a minute to just talk about, I previewed how I was going to talk about a little bit of data on this. So here's what we need. It's going to be blunt. We need a geometry course that's infused with algebra. When I examined the SAT results with the administration and the math department chair, it surfaced that the, that only twenty-three percent, or one-hundred-and-seventy-eight out of seven-hundred-and-fifty-six students met or exceeded the Heart of Algebra sub-score on the SAT. So the SAT that I just reported on has subscores, and one of those subscores is the Heart of Algebra. And that really focuses on pre-algebra, algebraic skills, Algebra One, and a little bit of two-algebra. Now, you may ask yourself, where do those one-hundred-and-seventy-eight kids come from who meet that standard and that sub-score? Well, ninety-eight of those students took two Algebra Honors their freshman year. Fifty-eight of those students took Geometry Honors, and the remaining twenty-two students took a variety of courses, including Geometry, Geometry and Construction, BC Calculus, One Algebra, and Two Algebra. So again, we have an algebra issue. We could make every kid come, except for the one-hundred-and-seventy-eight that we pre-identify, and have multicalgebra again. We're not going to do that. What we're going to do instead is, we're going to work with our teachers to develop out our geometry course. We've, we've had a new geometry course this year in, in our honor section, our regular section that we offer here to freshmen and sophomores. We're going to continue to develop out that curriculum so that it addresses all of the algebra needs that we see when we analyze the data. That's my soapbox on geometry and algebra. And again, this is a trend that, you know, these are our students, and we see this, and we need to remedy that. So we actually have an opportunity to infuse algebra in our geometry courses and also to infuse it in our two Algebra Honors and two Algebra Regular Courses. So students will get at least two opportunities while they're at ETHS, in some cases, three if they're taking one Algebra, to really develop and hone those algebra skills over time. And here is our, the grid. You see CTE on there, it's in your packet. CTE Math Course, AP Computer Science Principles. A lot of these are just renames. You'll see that Three English One is up for a deletion. That's because, you know, we have a, we have our sophomore English class, and we really are going to take our three, students who would have been eligible for Three English One, and we're going to move those, and those students into Three English Two, as we maintain our AP courses and our Three Two English Honors Course.
So did we just discover this algebra issue, or has it been an issue, and we, you know, kind of like, the diagnose, we're better at diagnosing, so that's why we figured it out? But it's always been there?
Well, you know, here's, here's my take. We've never given the SAT before. We've never had the data on the Heart of Algebra, just laid out there for us, for, you know, around seven-hundred-and-fifty kids who take it. But the other thing, you know, in visiting classrooms, particularly freshman courses, you see a difference in the algebra abilities, not just at different levels. You could be in a Geometry Honors Course, and there was a wide range of algebra facility, same as in an Algebra Regular Course. So it's certainly something we're attuned to now because we have hard data on it, and something we're going to work on also with our partners at sixty-five. We're going to work on a freshman, on a, you know, end-of-course algebra test that students can take, and we'll have data on, on that as well. Again, though, what we don't want to do is have all of our freshmen come in and take algebra a second time. So we're making adjustments to our curriculum so we can be responsive to those algebra needs.
And is there, is, is this something that other people do, too?
Yeah. I mean, algebra, you know, when you go to a, when you go into a geometry class, you'll see a lot of algebra there anyway.
No, I, I'm just talking about sort of other districts, other schools.
Oh, other districts are all over the place with this. Some, some districts start with algebra when they come in in ninth grade. So there's, there's various different ways to get to the, to the goalpost.
I'll just add to that quickly. So instead of changing the situation, most of our kids, we don't have very many freshmen in One Algebra. Our freshmen come to us having completed algebra. But what Pete's saying is, we really realize, well, first of all, we've always realized this part, algebraic thinking, of all the mathematics that we teach at the high school is the most important mathematical thinking we teach. And, and so what we're going to do is, again, we'll, we'll continue to go on the factor that they come to us having already completed algebra. But, but by putting it as a major component of that geometry, which is primarily freshmen, we're going to be able to really try to operationalize that algebraic thinking.
Yeah, I was going to add that. Pretty similar. I mean, kids are coming to us at all these different levels. We have a few that are very proficient in algebra, you know, and they go on, do great things in math and all that. And then we have kids that aren't proficient, that, the small group that is coming to us to do algebra. But then there's, it sounds to me like there's this big group in the middle that we aren't giving the kind of proficiency or making them proficient in algebra.
Correct.
And it seems to me that if we're successful in infusing more algebra, deepening their algebra, algebraic understanding, you know, this is foundational, right? So it's not just going to help their performance in geometry, it's going to springboard them into higher level courses, including an up-through calculus, where, you know, algebra is fundamental to all of that.
Right, right.
Dale, please, you know, throw something at me if I made a mistake here. But, you know, this, this is really, I think, an important thing to improve the, the performance of a big group of students in the middle who might otherwise have more success in higher level mathematics.
Well, I'd point out to many of us in the room who are not engineers or, or teaching higher level math in college, most of us probably don't use our calculus, our trig, the like.
Use your algebra every day.
Too much in our everyday lives. I have to confess, I don't, even though I took all those courses. But we do use algebra or algebraic reasoning every single day of our lives.
Right.
And so that's why it's so critical, that that be the fundamental component that are, that we, that we assure our students have before they leave this school.
Right.
Good.
Good. Well, I think that Mark has touched on what is even bigger point, which is the talk about all the kids in the middle. And I know that Mr. Liebforth has heard this maybe till he's sick of it. But, you know, from parent, from, you know, year after year from parents, that, that there is Geometry Honors, and then there's Geometry, you know, and that there's this huge gulf, and there's no room in the middle. And if I understand this proposal correctly, it is in part a response to that. And I think that that's shown by the fact that it doesn't displace Geometry Honors, so the Geometry Honors remains. And I think that most parents have discovered that Geometry Honors is not just geometry with an H at the end. Geometry Honors is an entirely different course from geometry. But it doesn't mean it needs to be at a low level. And, and I, and I think that this is an attempt to be responsive to those concerns about the vast gulf, gulf that has existed between Geometry Honors and Geometry.
Yeah, the, we, yes. And we also can't lose sight of the fact that a lot of the students in Geometry Honors who struggled had algebra issues. Not all of them, but a great number of them. Enough so that we see an exodus from two Algebra Honors into the regular level. And, and we don't want that to be the pathway for kids. We want kids to move up, not to, to move down.
So Pete, I, I appreciate the review of curriculum process that you're adding. I'm assuming that that data will be shared with us, the analysis of it as it comes forward.
Yeah. I'll actually, I can do an overview of the entire process, and then as we onboard, as we have reports filed that can demonstrate how those reports then influence curriculum work. Those will be folded into our curriculum proposals. Ultimately, that's the goal.
Right. Okay.
Interesting.
Has he done it? Because I had one slightly different.
Sure. Other questions about this? Mark, you have another?
Yeah. You know, if we're done with this topic, I don't want to rush off if anybody has anything. But while Pete's here, I know we have a lot of people in the audience tonight that are concerned about the fact that we're not going to be offering Hebrew foreign language as a foreign language to incoming students. And we all know that there's a lot of background on that. This question has been going on for some number of years, and we've been facing difficulties. But, you know, we have a new group of parents who may not have heard that discussion and really understand the background on all this. So I thought it might be helpful, you know, to the audience, anybody looking on TV, to maybe go through the, some of the background and history, what we've done, what we've attempted in order to keep the program going, and why you arrived at the decision that you arrived at.
Sure. So, you know, first off, we have a teacher currently teaching two sections of Hebrew, Anna Raber. She's full-time at Niles North this year in addition to working here. She is informed that she will not be able to teach here at ETHS next year. So, and it took a lot to get her in that position. You know, we've not had success in the, in the last three years, really, in locating a qualified, certified teacher. And our program is really no longer sustainable because of that. So we'll work, we're committed to working with the students that are currently enrolled in Hebrew one through four, so that they have online options over the next years to complete their language sequence, if they wish to do so. But really, it's the, it, it's a very difficult position to staff. And right now, we have thirty-four students in total who are taking, who are availing themselves of Hebrew at ETHS, spread across two sections. In board parlance, that's a point four, right? It's not a full-time position, so that complicates it even more. It's not a full time position, so that complicates it even more. So not only do we have to have a, you know, we, we, our, our chase has been a certified, highly qualified teacher who is committed to teaching at a point four, which is a reduced part time schedule.
So I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'll put you on the spot, I guess. Can, can you explain why it has to be certified teacher?
Yeah, all, yes, all of our, briefly, all of our teachers are certified.
Right.
By the state of Illinois.
Because the state.
It's required.
Requires it, right, okay.
That's an important piece.
That's an important piece, you know, because we've had a lot of people in the past suggesting, well, you know, there's plenty of people that are capable of teaching this course.
Right.
But we can't hire them.
We did find someone a couple of years ago and we offered her a position and it was a part time position. And she turned us, after much, you know, soul searching, she turned us down and went to a full time position. She met all of the certifications and qualifications, came highly recommended, had teaching experience, but, but couldn't commit because of the, again, the part time nature of the, the course.
Jonathan? Just picking, picking up on, on Mark's question. A lot of the parents we're hearing from are new to the system and they don't know the history of, of it. But I guess the question in terms of addressing them is, they seem to think that it's easier for us to find such a teacher than has been our experience, certified. If those parents could come up, could find us a certified teacher, would, would we continue the course?
We don't have the numbers to sustain right now. We have thirty four students total in the program, so no.
Is, well, I guess the, then the question is, to what extent the reduction in the enrollment has reflected the uncertainty about whether Hebrew would continue?
It will, yes, and the re, then there's a few reasons. I mean, when we can't find a highly qualified certified teacher, we end up in situations like we are with Anna Raber, who's by all intents and purposes a great and talented instructor. But again, we, it comes down to, she's going to go full time at, now she's currently at full time, which means she's an additional point four here on her schedule. And she's teaching multiple levels and multiple sections within those two periods, so that isn't, isn't sustainable.
Other questions? All right, thank you, Dr. Davis. Thank you for staying there and answering even more questions. And our next report, right, is the opening of school report, two thousand seventeen.
And that's Dr. Levy.
All right.
Okay, I have four slides, not counting the opening and the questions.
Because the answer is, school is open.
School's open and we have a lot of students.
Yeah.
All right, so this year's official enrollment is three thousand five hundred and sixty seven students, highest in thirty years. My, I have opening school reports that go back to nineteen eighty one, that's as far back as I can go. It is the highest as far back as I can verify in opening a school report, so I can say at least thirty years. When we look at our enrollments by race, ethnicity and proportion of our enrollments, we see, compared to last year, proportion of our Hispanic, Latino enrollment and our white enrollments have increased. Our Hispanic, Latino have been increasing over the past five years. Our white enrollments have ticked up from last year and then our African American, black enrollments have been, our decrease are down a little bit from last year and have slight decrease over the past five years. Our special education enrollments, pretty much the same as last year, but still higher than five years ago, so highest in five years. Four oh two for this year.
But enrollment is also the highest in five years.
And our enrollment is the highest.
You have to factor that in.
Yes. Our enrollment is highest and everywhere is highest. And then, just my last slide that I usually pull out, I like to pull out, is the bilingual enrollments have more than doubled. That's like two and a half times in five years. So as, as our enrollments increase, this has increased, this bilingual program has increased markedly. And then the rest of the data by average class size and department is in the report. So any questions?
Any questions? No questions.
It's my shortest and sweetest of the year.
Great report. Love the numbers.
I'll, I'll answer one question that's not answered. Longtime Evanstonians will remember the day when we had like fifty five hundred students at the high school. And I've heard people say, wow, are we going to be back there? No, people aren't producing children quite at the rate that they were producing during the baby boomer. But it looks as if we're going to still, you know, have, this is probably going to become closer to the new normal.
All right, thank you. All right, Mary's moving, so we have our capital improvement program.
That's Mary Rodino.
Good evening.
Hello.
I know that not everyone is here to see me, but this is probably the largest audience I've ever had, as you all know, because I get to go at the end, so. This is the most interesting of my two presentations tonight, so I'm glad there's an audience. So I'm here tonight to talk to you all about our capital plan for the next four years. We do five years in total, which is kind of a recap of last year, summer of twenty seventeen spending. And then talk about what we'd like to do for the upcoming summer and then give a, a few years of additional information after that. So I'd like to talk to you about general background, some of the completed projects that we did last summer, and then just our general capital, capital improvements program and some funding issues and then financial plan in general. So as I said, this is an annual update of five years of information that we give you. There's a lot of technical information in the couple page memo that is in the board packet. But basically, we consider an asset something that's valued over twenty five thousand dollars, has, you know, a useful life, that's something more than, you know, say, computers and things like that. Typically, our, our lives are at least five years on things we consider assets. As you all know, we have over one point two million square feet of building and sixty plus acres of campus. Have a nice little picture for you, that's a couple of years old, but not really any major changes since this picture was taken, so. So particularly for new board members, just wanted to run through some of the funding sources that we use, even though we don't always use all of them. These are some of the things that we have used in recent years. Geo bonds or general obligation bonds, which are the funding source that we use every couple of years. And that is, I would say, the major funding source for the capital projects of the district. We have used something called Q Z A B, which is a qualified zone academy bond. I, Mark, I remember you commenting a few years ago that it, it was basically almost free money and you said, can we get more free money? And it hasn't come up since, but we do take advantage of those types of funding programs, usually national types of funding programs when we can. And then we do occasionally get some grants and of course, our foundation contributes quite a bit of money to our capital program every year. So as you've all heard for some years, we're not replacing things as quickly as they die here. Our depreciation on our financial statements is just under three million now. And, and so that means we should be spending at least three million a year to kind of keep up. So ideally, you'd want to spend in the neighborhood of three to four million a year, but we really can't afford to. And we really can't afford to basically because of the taps, tax caps that we all know were instituted in the nineteen nineties and, and so we're limited in, in what we can issue in bonds and, and we have to stay within that budget. So our five year C I P plan, which includes one year recap, is a total estimated cost of twenty six point four million. And the board's approval, which would be at the next meeting, is for one year of the plan with estimates for the future years. But really, you're approving the financing for next summer. So now to get into some of the actual parts of the proposed plan, we have categories that are in the spreadsheet that I included in the memo that include things like site improvements, very, I'm going to say, non exciting things like mechanical, electric plumbing, toilets, roofs, masonry, windows, asbestos removal, and, and those are the things that are just really completely necessary in a building this old. And then, and then sort of the fun, cool projects fall usually under the educational area, so we'll get to some of those. So just a quick recap of some of the projects that we did last summer. The fieldhouse windows and roof, as you might remember, the roof had been done a few years before and the, the warranty was not, it, it, it didn't meet the warranty standards and so we received a refund and had to recoat the roof and at the same time did the windows. So hopefully that area is not experiencing leaks that we had experienced in the past. The upstairs theater roof was also done and I think so far that's been successful. I don't think they've had any problematic leaks up there. Probably the coolest project was the ceramics lab. I don't know if you've all had a chance to see that, but that was really the, the biggest change to a space. And, and from what I hear, the fine arts department really likes that. We've continued to add to the signage project, which we all know has been really needed here and is very important for wayfinding. And then there's a project that's still being finished, which are some fine arts acoustical panels. And those were in several of the classrooms and that was largely funded by the E T H S foundation. That's not a, a, a big dollar project and, again, that was primarily foundation funding. So as in past years, for the plan next year, we will need to address some infrastructure issues. The plan includes replacing the pool roof and also the filter system in the pool. It's better to do things like a filter system before they fail than to have it fail during the school year. It's very old equipment and if it were to fail during the school year, it would be out of commission for quite a while. There are also some first floor roofs over South School, like the special ed office and then Alt School in West School that are, are, some of our very few, we have very few first floor roofs and so those would be redone this summer as well. We are really needing to address windows, so most likely those will be in North School. We're kind of gauging it by what leaks the most. And the auditorium is in need of updating to the H V A C system. It's taking a very long time to cool particularly, so those are projects we want to do next summer. So the kind of exciting, cool project, in my opinion, we're proposing an entrance three renovation. As you all know, that's the entrance on the northwest side of the school where a lot of our teams, athletes and P E students enter and exit the building for P E classes. We've been hearing for several years that it's greatly in need of a secure inviting entryway with increased visibility for kids. And there's also a big need for an elevator in that area of the campus, as well as some second floor washrooms. I'm, I'm not familiar with all of the layout, but second floor washrooms kind of right above where the wrestling gyms are, I think. And then, so the plan is also to include a semi enclosure of the walkway, that, that really plain brick walkway that the students and, and fans and parents and community walk through. Like if you're walking past the bike compound and into the building, you know that very plain brick walkway. So we're excited to be discussing needed improvements and then improvements that just make the area really look like the showpiece that we'd like it to be for visitors, students and parents. So we will be providing you, you know, more information about that entrance three renovation as, as it develops. But that's really the big ticket item on the annual list of items that you'll be approving tonight. But in addition, we have some projects slated for future years that include more windows. I, I'd like to really make that a priority just because of some of the leaks that the upper floors are experiencing. We're also in need of a renovation to our track, resurfacing that area and figuring out if there are additional things needed, such as additional seating. We continue to try to renovate some of the student restrooms. I think some of them are really in need of that. And then finally, in the summer of twenty nineteen, we will be needing to replace the artificial turf on the football field. So our plan is to issue four million dollars of bonds in the spring. Like I said, we do that typically every two years. That would be pending board approval. We'll come back to you with documents for that when the timing is right. And then we'll also be utilizing foundation contributions and, and some fund balance in the capital fund. And in addition, you know, this district in the past had funded some of the capital projects primarily out of the operations and maintenance fund. So I do think it's appropriate to continue to use some funds from that operations and maintenance fund and they, you know, we only do that when we know that the fund can withstand that. And so I'm also proposing a transfer of six hundred thousand dollars from the O and M fund. We could really just budget it there and do the projects, but I think it's a good idea to keep the projects in the capital projects fund. So we would recommend at the next meeting that the board approves the five year capital improvements plan and recommend that we proceed with the plans for summer two thousand eighteen capital improvement projects. I think that's it, yes. Any questions?
Questions?
Okay.
Yes.
So I don't really have a question, but you had mentioned a few times that we'd seen this over and over. This was my first time seeing it.
I apologize.
No, 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 that's okay.
Five of you have seen it, I feel like a record sometimes.
But it's, I just appreciated how clear it was and for someone who is new to it, I really, I got a lot out of it. And I really, really appreciate the balance you did between the have tos, like, you know, the leaks and the windows and all those lovely things, as well as the things we want that are better for our students, that are aesthetically nice as well as educationally. So I think, and, and did that within our means, which we wish we had lots and lots more money, but we don't. And I just think you did a really nice job of that, so, thank you.
Well, I will tell you, I started with a total of seven million dollars of projects and about four million dollars of.
I'm sure you could have gone higher. I'm sure we have more than seven million dollars.
Yeah, and, and you know, it is a balance and so you try to kind of scale some things back and, and whatever could be put off until next year. And so I asked those questions, how's the football field, how's the track? So it, it, it does come together nice and neatly at the end, but it's a little painful sometimes, but it's the reality.
Beth?
Mike?
Yeah, along those same lines. I mean, I realize we have two new board members sitting here who haven't seen this before or may not have and maybe some other people as well. And, and Mary, you kind of, you went through it kind of quick at the beginning there, because again, we've all heard it many times, or many of us have heard it many times. But can you go back and, and talk about the four million that we ought to be spending, really to keep up with our depreciation of our physical plan and so forth, our needs? And comment on, in, in the absence of these caps that cap our capital spending, our, our ability to borrow, you know, could we pay for that, could we afford it if those caps didn't exist? Could we pay for borrowing up to four million a, a year or, or the spending up to four million a year on capital? And then talk just briefly about why we can't, why that, what is that cap, how'd that come about?
Okay, sure.
Just, you know, two minutes.
Yeah, I got to be honest, I, I usually kind of move quickly through that because that's where everyone's eyes glaze over and, but I do realize that only five of you have heard this every year. So, so the reason that we say we should be spending, I'm going to say three and a half to four million dollars a year, is that if you literally look at the financial numbers, and I'm sure all of you are familiar with the concept of depreciation, but, but we literally, you know, write off three million dollars of assets a year. So, so really those things are declining in their useful life and, and that's just how it works. And so in order to stay, you know, current on your facilities, you want to at least spend what you are experiencing in a depreciable value. So, so that said, if we were not, so the, the tax caps came into play in the nineteen nineties and basically wherever you were at a certain point in time, that was the maximum amount that you could levy for. And so as you pay off your debt, you can experience more debt. But you, you also, of course, want to make sure that you can afford to pay for it. But we don't even get to that point in the conversation because this district in particular had, did not, you know, increase their debt at that point to give them sort of a higher ceiling. So we sort of inherited where we are. Could we afford to do it? I would say, you know, if the law allowed it, we could definitely afford to do more than what we do. But I think we'd want to be careful, particularly being in the state of Illinois, because, you know, it's seventy degrees one day and thirty degrees the next, and funding's good one day and not so good the next. And, you know, we're still hearing things about property tax freezes. You know, I kind of thought that that was put to bed for a little while. So, yes, we could afford more than we can afford under the tax caps, but we'd still want to be really cautious about that. The one thing that I will say, and you may have noticed that it's in the five-year plan as far as funding sources, we have been fortunate in timing in that there is a TIF district in Evanston that will be coming off in a couple of years. And, and I know that Bill Stafford before me has, had always really talked about the fact that this district would be very smart to not plan to use those additional revenues. When that TIF district falls off, all the other taxing bodies experience additional revenues that had been previously going into the TIF district. So when that TIF district falls off, it's always been our stance that we should at least use a good portion of that for capital. And I think that that's really the only way that we might ever get ahead of this constant struggle between what we can afford and what we really need. You can, you can see by looking at the next three years of what we really need, and it's probably six to seven million a year if you look at that schedule, and then we have to scale it back every year, so. So I don't mean to gloss over that stuff. It's really important, but it's sometimes tough to digest it. Nine forty-five, but I'm always happy to answer questions on it.
Thank you.
So.
Yeah, that was very helpful. Thank you. Thinking ahead. Other questions? Right, thank you. Thank you, Mary. Awesome. Okay, where are we? We are at comments from the public.
Okay. We have six folks signed up for public comment. I'm gonna remind everyone that there's three minutes. I have a timer. And as a courtesy, I'll let you know, the speakers know when they have a minute left. I'll go one. And when the timer sounds, I'll briefly fumble with my phone, and I'll remind you just to finish your sentence. Thank you. So the first up is Benny Swislow.
Yes.
There he is.
There we go.
Good job.
First of all, thanks for your dedication. I don't know how you do this all the time. It is amazing. What I'm most impressed with is that you look for solutions, and that's what I'm all about. And I can't wait to tell you, but my name is Benny Swislow. I work for the I Center. The I Center has been recognized by the Illinois Council for Teachers of Foreign Languages the address to go to for professional development workshops for Hebrew teachers across our city. Chicago's extraordinary. There are only twenty-one public high schools that teach Hebrew as a world language nationally. Seven of them are right here in Chicago. All of them are on the North Shore. They're thriving. They're wonderful. My job is to love, not my job, my, my heart loves Hebrew. I love Israel. I, we needed to professionalize our profession, and I feel your pain. We're there. What I'm here to tell you tonight is, yes, we've had difficulties in the past. However, there are three very viable, very certifiable, very licensed Hebrew teachers for Evanston Township High School for the eighteen-nineteen school year. I didn't know to ask them to submit an application when looking on Evanston Township High School Human Resources. There was no job listed. There, and I don't think there's anything listed for eighteen-nineteen. So I was very surprised when the letters went home to the parents saying that we, Evanston, I'm already weeing. I get very involved with the schools that I deal with, that Evanston is not offering Hebrew as a world language, that you're gonna go online. Evanston Township School Board of Directors, I have been here and done this before. We got to that point. It was Stevenson High School. Stevenson High School had a full-time position. Teachers changed, populations changed. They went from, I wrote the original curriculum in the early eighties. We went from forty kids one year to a hundred and forty kids the next year. They've gone up and down. There's, they tried the online thing. We put the kids in the basement and only with the computer labs. It is not a way to teach high school students. We need this. This is what this is all about. This is what schooling is. And the population went down to thirty-six. We secured one of the teachers that I've been after. The school population has gone up. She is doing well. There are three different candidates that I have to offer you. There is one with a doctorate in the education. I can't disclose her name for the integrity of her current job. The next is, I'm very excited about her because she's coming from Middlebury College. Middlebury College is Dr. Ringwald, and they're creating, is that me?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Finish your sentence.
So, that's another, that's an Israeli who's got a master's in teaching Hebrew as a world language. And a third candidate is hailing right here from Evanston, who just secured her Illinois teaching license. She comes from an engineering and Hebrew background. So stick with it. Please don't give up. This is, this is what we've been waiting for. I think you've already endured the pain of the off-years. This is, this is, why go through that if you can't reap the benefits of what's ahead of you? I know these, these women intimately, and they're, they're dynamos in the field.
It's time.
Thank you.
Next up is Kip Maxey Goran.
Just for clarification, there was in the capital, capital improvement plan, there was a thing for the one and a half million dollar renovation of the Chemphys Theory Center? And I'm just here to talk about that. So my name is Kip Maxey Goran. Right now, I'm a senior at Evanston Township High School. I'm a student in Chemphys. And I'm confused and appalled that any money at all is going towards redoing the, redoing the Theory Center. Now, I know it wasn't included in the presentation, but I just really feel strongly against even the proposition. Like, I don't disagree that things in the Theory Center might be old or outdated, but renovation is really the last thing we need. The Theory Center is kind of like the country club of our school. It's exclusive, it's mean, and it's ultimately useless. It's really, it isn't really like a space for science. It's more often than not a space for Chemphys kids to go hang out and watch Netflix or relax. It's an alternative to eating lunch in the lunchrooms or hanging out with your friends before school. And, and then in addition, there's a huge issue with Chemphys kids being favored and doted upon. There's a hugely present sense of entitlement among Chemphys kids that were like at the top of the school. And I'm sure that I've been a part of that attitude at times, but that doesn't change the fact that that attitude really needs to be changed. It's kind of disgusting that I've heard people say, "I thought they were smart, but they're not in Chemphys." And I've heard that come out of the mouths of students, and it's a horrible thing to say. And the sense of entitlement and the casual use of the Theory Center combined to make it a great place to ostracize and exclude anyone else in the school. For the other thirty-two hundred kids in the school, it's a really uncomfortable place to go. Sixty entitled, mostly male, mostly white people with a sense that they're better than everyone else does not really sound like an equitable place to me. And unfortunately, even though making the space like new and revamped might sound like a great idea, unless it's made only into a lab-only space, nothing will really happen. It'll continue being that space for students to sit back and relax, and it'll continue being like the country club.
One minute.
Thank you. There'll still be the sense of entitlement. As far as I can tell, unless it's a place for every student who's in an AP class or even a science class, or every student in the school even, for, to go, unless it's like open to everyone, the only thing that'll change when the Theory Center's remodeled will be its size. As a Chemphys, as a person in Chemphys, I would really say that we've done nothing more than any of the students to deserve the praise we get. We already have two of the best science teachers in the school, and there's no world I can think of where we also need a million and a half-dollar renovation to our already problematic space. Even as a current Chemphys student, I know that there are countless better ways to spend money. Diversifying the AP program to name one. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Steve Drapich.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for your time to hear me as well as to do these jobs, which is, I can tell it really hard. I am here to speak about Hebrew. I will try and be really brief and to the point. I believe in that old saw from the great movie of the nineteen eighties, "If you build it, they will come." I think that if the school in the district supports the Hebrew program, it will do well. It will thrive and it will grow. There are teachers out there, I believe, that can be found who will do the job. And I think that once those teachers are in place, students will register and take the class. It's never gonna be the most popular language, but I think it's important that ETHS offers it. I think it's important for the students who want to take it. I think it's important for the community members who are Jewish and who want to see this language offered here as sort of a way of us being seen. I think it's important to, to all of them, and I think it's important to my, my daughter, who's gonna be a freshman here next year. She's coming from a small Jewish day school, and I think sees this as a way of helping her integrate into this very large and very intimidating community in a way that is going to make her feel better about herself, confident in her identity, and better able to be prepared to be a student at ETHS in all the different academic subjects. So I'm just asking you, please, from my, my heart, to put all of your efforts that you can into trying to keep this program alive despite the difficulties. I know that there is a community of, of adults in the, out here that are willing to help, whatever way we can, if you're willing to try and tap into our, our reservoirs of assistance as well. And I do hope that, that we find, you were able to find a way to keep this going, because I think it's important to a lot of people and a lot of students. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Next up is Sarah Solinger.
Hi, I'm Sarah Solinger. I'm an eighth grader at Chicago Jewish Day School. As of now, ETHS is not placement testing incoming freshmen for Hebrew. We were told that the department is committed to providing Hebrew for students already in the program, but will not make that commitment to new incoming students like me. Like, like my brother, I'm expecting to place into Hebrew Level Four, or on a bad day, Level Three. If the school's already committed to educating existing students at this level, it seems perplexing, to say the least, not to extend the same opportunities the schools are already providing to the incoming students, like me, capable of the same level of academic excellence. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Aaron Cohen.
Thank you. I admire your stamina and fortitude and appreciate the opportunity. We respect the board and administration's good faith efforts to solve this problem of finding the teacher, and maybe what Benny offered is the solution. Regarding the Hebrew language itself, because I think it's important for people to grasp why this is such a keenly felt issue, it's a world language whose essence helped shape Western civilization. In modern times, the story of Hebrew's revival is unique, and the explosion of Hebrew culture demonstrates the transformative power of language to shape and give expression to dynamic human societies. Hebrew is not just a language of or for Jews. It also is a language of Israeli Muslims, Christians, Druze and Circassians, as well as others, and represents the literal common ground of one of the world's most diverse culturally vibrant societies. At a time when people wrestle with issues of indigenousness, cultural provenance, and authenticity, Hebrew and its role in the Middle East makes for a fascinating study of a microcosm of cultural intersection, expression, conflict, and more. So that's the passion behind our desire to see Hebrew continue. It's a venerable program. When my daughter studied Hebrew at ETHS, and I don't want to think how long ago that was, wasn't all that long. There were probably eighty or ninety students, and I think it's well-stated to understand that give this program traction, because the desire to see it sustained in the future will be strong. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Next up is Rachel Solinger.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Solinger, and I am the proud parent of a junior, that incoming freshman. And I am the administrator at Chicago Jewish Day School who is responsible for transitioning students to ETHS. In the interest of time, rather than read my prepared remarks, which will raise additional issues, I've decided that I will send my remarks over email to the board and the administration. My remarks are related to the topic of Hebrew, but specifically about why maintaining a Hebrew program at ETHS is critical at this juncture, when the rise of antisemitism to the tune of a hundred and seventy-five percent last year, before the election, is beginning to really make its presence known here at ETHS. I'm definitely not, under any circumstances, suggesting that the elimination of Hebrew is antisemitic. But rather, I'm going to make the argument that the need for curriculum, as well as additional steps the school needs to take to protect Jewish students. I urge you to read my email and discuss these issues, and there are a lot of us who are available to discuss the issue. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That concludes public comment for this evening.
Thank you. All right, so we are at FOIA. Dr. Beavis, you wanna talk us through those?
One, two, three, four. We have fi- one, two, three, four, five FOIAs. We, Allen, Bradley, Bookwalter, Armond Trout, and Zoller, and they're in your packet.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, so we are at board reports, and I know that we have a report from Pat. And the board report on the school board retreat, I'm gonna ask that we do that at our next meeting, because we've got some information from our field director that I haven't had time to get to the board yet, so we'll, we'll wait on that. Okay, Pat?
Thank you. So I had the opportunity, which I appreciate from the board and from ETHS, to go to the Council on Urban Boards of Education Conference, and they're part of the National Association of School Boards. And there was, you know, it was a conference. So there were site visits at schools, there were keynote addresses, breakouts, et cetera. And I wrote a little report that's in the board packet, but just a few things that I wanted to highlight, sort of the major takeaways. First of all, that we're pretty lucky here at ETHS, because many of our board colleagues from around the country are really wrestling with the threat of financial ruin and the threat of charters taking over their entire districts. And all of those threats really demand that boards and administrations just focus on survival. And they're not even at the place of trying to have a conversation about equity and about serving all of their students. And so I, I felt lucky to be in the room sometimes that we are having that conversation. Another takeaway was that, you know, our national and our local conversations around the country really focus on helping kids sort of work through the system. And it is really important, because we have students right now, and we have to help them to achieve the best that they can and the most that they can. But it was really very striking through the presentations there, as well as some presentations that happened after, going to the Courageous Conversations Conference, and also having the privilege of seeing Ta-Nehisi Coates, thanks to Dr. Campbell's great interview. You know, that there is this, we need to address the system. You know, that there is this, we need to address the system. We really need to unpack why it is and how it is that we ended up where we are, and what we need to do to change the system and really look at reform at that level. I think we are at ETHS doing that, and we're, we're thinking about that. But I think that's something we cannot lose sight of, because we really need to address this narrative and move away from just helping kids move through the system and quote unquote, beat the odds, but really change the framework and change the system so that we're not talking about that. We're just talking about kids and everybody having that opportunity to imagine and create the education and the opportunity that they want for themselves. So it's really certainly the balance of the work in the here and now, but it's that systemic piece. And again, I know we are talking about that, but it really struck me as I went to this conference and then the others I mentioned, that, that there's this, we, we really need to think big and make this kind of change that really, just really changes the, the conversation. So I was really privileged to be at, here's some great people, I mentioned them in my report. And I think that's something we, I, I, I want us to always keep our eye on as we do the really important work that we do one-on-one right now to make sure our kids are getting everything that they need. So, thank you.
Wonderful. Great. Thank you. Thank you for this report. I want to talk to you some more about some of these people you heard, because I know some of those names. Okay. We are at the Student Board Report. Yes, we're there.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me, as always. As Thanksgiving break approaches, stress levels are running high and focus may be waning. Stress levels are also running high for a particular student representative as college deadlines near. That's neither here nor there. However, students are motivated and more than capable of making it through this last week of deadlines and tests before a brief respite. Last Monday, Student Senate hosted the Second Witherbell Forum, an event designed to amplify student voice to the administration. The event encouraged, the event encouraged discussion on topics such as race, gender, academics, disciplinary actions, and more. Students were delighted to spend time with the eponymous Dr. Campbell and Witherspoon and Dr. Beavis at the event. Some feedback from the event does not come as a surprise. The students see and understand the weight of the achievement gap at ETHS. The most frequent, frequent response from the race discussion highlighted the lack of diversity within AP and Honors classes. Students also commented on how sports teams and extracurricular activities, as well as friend groups, tend to be somewhat homogeneous. As one student spoke about the surface-level diversity in Evanston and ETHS, is a school truly diverse if student lives are stratified? The conversation about gender, while providing some thoughtful ideas about making history more gender-inclusive and increasing gender sensitivity training, especially for male STEM teachers, seemed to blame the onus of sexism on women. The most repeated response about gender at ETHS urged the administration to lower their expectation of male behavior. To me and many Senate members, this signals a desperate need to educate students on the nuances of sexism and the complexities of gender identity. It isn't a secret that sexism is alive and well within ETHS, especially with pleas for safety to discipline students who catcall or harass within the hallways. Student Senate would love to meet with administrators and board members to discuss potential action on the issues of race and gender. By the next board meeting, Senate members will be presenting a formal report of the Witherbell findings. In other news, The Pot Thickens, an in-depth article exploring how and why ETHS students may choose to use marijuana, has been redistributed with modifications to the original text. Certain modifications included health warnings about marijuana usage, a brief statement about the current legality of recreational marijuana use, and more objective language, so as not to incite drug abuse in a school publication. The Evanstonian staff is pleased with the decision to reprint the paper, but plans to work with the administrate, administration to formulate procedural guidelines on how to handle future situations. The guidelines would hopefully include a commitment to clear and timely communication about why student work was confiscated, procedures to help avoid drastic administrative interference in the distribution of the school paper, and a more concrete picture of what is appropriate and necessary for a high school paper. The outspoken student journalists feel passionately about the power of student voice in the context of controversial issues, and look to the administration to respect and nurture that voice. This does not cover many of the multifaceted workings of ETHS students since last meeting, but it's a start. Thank you.
Thank you, Emma. All right. Dr. Witherspoon?
So, our CTE, Career and Technical Education Department, has been named the 2017 High School Program of the Year by the Technology Education Association of Illinois.
Wow.
Yay, CTE. I think you've been watching all of the facility improvements over the last ten years. As I think you know, we've invested millions. But more importantly, we have teachers who have invested in a 21st century curriculum and programming that is aimed at preparing students for life and careers in the 21st century. So brag, 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 Department of the Year. In addition to that, we're going to have a visual arts exhibition in Open House this Wednesday evening. That begins at 6:00 PM. It includes students from District 65 and community members. And, and it's K through 12, art on display, and just a wonderful opportunity for our families to come and appreciate student art being produced in this community. This week also, we have the College and Career Services hosting College Prep and Planning for Freshmen, Sophomores, and Their Parents. And this program is this Thursday evening, that's the 16th of November, and that's the 6:30 in the evening in the auditorium. I'll just repeat that. College Prep and Planning for Freshmen and Sophomores and Their Families. So I really encourage folks to get out for that. We have a number of special events for students and families coming up, and I'm going to tick those off quickly. Our Career and Technical Ed Department is going to be hosting Engineering Information Night from 6:30 to 8:00 on Thursday, November 30th. For folks listening in who aren't aware of it, we have a full-scale pre-engineering program here at ETHS. And students in grades eight through 11, and their families are invited to attend that. We also have a FAN, a Family Action Network event, that's been added to the lineup, besides everything you've been seeing publicized. But that's on Tuesday, November 28th, and that'll be Dr. Meg J., who will be presenting Supernormal Stories of Adversary Resilience, Adversity, Resilience, and Growth. That's a seven in the auditorium. Also, a lot of family activities going on. Special Education Information Night for incoming families. It'll be held on Thursday, December the 7th, and that's from 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock. And there'll be more information going out to eighth-grade families in particular. And the Fine Arts Department will be presenting a free jazz big band concert. And that's on Wednesday, December the 6th, at 7:00 PM. And again, great opportunities in our community. I do mention, want to mention that every year at this time, our deans do a canned food drive of non-perishable food items. Families are welcome to come in and contribute. And also cash or money donations are greatly welcome as they fill out those Thanksgiving baskets for very needy families in our community. We also have an annual gift drive for, for the winter holiday season. That kicks off next Monday, November 20th. That's a community service activity. It is huge. If you want to stop by and pick up some of the, last year, I think it was mittens, but just little paper mittens with items written on them, or whatever the symbol is this year, that you can pick up to contribute to that. And finally, just a reminder that beginning next week, November 22nd, 23rd, and 24th, we're going to have Thanksgiving recess. And you're not going to find much activity at ETHS for that, that weekend. That concludes my report.
Thank you. All right. So, I am now officially convening the 2017 levy public hearing. This public hearing is being held due to the district's intent to adopt an aggregate levy of 3.9% in excess of the 2016 levy. Ms. Modino, did you publish this notice of this hearing?
Yes, we published the notice on November 2nd, 2017.
Good. The, the proposed levy will provide funds to support the usual expenses of Evanston Township High School. An amount of, in excess of a 3.9% increase is to be levied to ensure that our extension base increases by the tax cap, CPI of 2.1%, plus any new property increase.
Anyone desiring to present testimony may do so at this time.
Ms. Modino, do you have any comments?
I do. I have a short presentation and then can answer any questions the board might have.
Okay.
Okay. So, I apologize. I know it's late. And this is not the most exciting of my two presentations. So, please, I don't want you to feel like I'm glossing over any of it. I'll be happy to go back, slow down, but I am going to try to make this concise. So, I have for you just a, a quick calendar. As I said, we published the legal notice on November 2nd. Tonight's the public hearing. On December 11th, the tax levy would be officially adopted. And then the, I believe it's the last Tuesday in December is the last day to file the levy with the county clerk. We typically do take that in person, and it's become my once-a-year visit with Bill Stafford, so. There's a lot of technical stuff here and tax levy terms and, you know, glossaries, and, and I don't want to bore you with that. A lot of this is really information that's required by law or defined by law. We're going to talk about some things like Consumer Price Index and Equalized Assessed Valuation. But there are some terms and, and there are some technical things also listed in the memo that was provided. So I think the summary is that tax levies in Cook County consist of two different levy amounts. The first is the, is the second half of the prior year's levy, to make that confusing. It's the largest portion we receive. A few years ago, Cook County changed that, so we received 55% of the prior year's levy. And then the second payment is the estimated first half of next year's levy. So, anyway, the important thing is we get the bulk of the money in the spring, or a large amount of the money in the spring. And, and we do track those revenue numbers separately, because of the way that Cook County works. So as we talked about before, with having those limits on our debt issuance, we also have limits or tax caps on what our property tax levy can be. It limits the amount that we can tax. It is based on last year's taxes and then an increase based on that. So the increase is the lesser of the prior year Consumer Price Index, or 5%. We've not seen a 5% increase as long as I can remember here, but the first few years I was here, maybe I, I wasn't as involved. But, so it's typically the prior year CPI. So, I guess the good news is our most recent Consumer Price Index number is 2.1%. And that compares to what we've seen in the past few years of .8, .7, so less than 1%. There will be another CPI rate coming out in December. And as I mentioned, in Cook County, the actual tax levy is a blended rate. So if you take the previous rate of .7 and then 2.1, you get a blended rate of about 1.4. So what does that mean? It means that our tax revenue would only increase by 1.4%. So the problem is, most of your expenses increase by more than that. So, as our president read in the introduction, our published levy increase will, will be stated as 3.9%, but we know that we'll never collect that much of an increase. But it's a means to collect taxes on the new property in Evanston and any expiring TIFs that are out there. So you always have to levy for more than what you expect to get, but we know that we're actually limited by what the law allows. The numbers are listed here for the funds individually. I, I can tell you that the only one that typically changes by much would be the Education Fund. That's where most of the change in percentages is reflected. There was a small increase in the IMRF Social Security Fund, just because that fund has been running at a small deficit. So we're trying to levy according to what the actual expenses are. There's also a Debt Service Levy that involves those bonds that we talked about earlier. And, and that's actually determined by paperwork that is turned into Cook County every time we do a bond issuance. So we don't really even calculate what the increase on that could be. The county calculates what the levy will be based on what we need to pay our debt. So just a, a little highlight of what this means. It will mean a very small increase. On an average, home in Evanston valued at around $400,000, our portion will increase by about $50, which is .2% increase on the total bill overall. One thing that was a change and will probably change, will change tax bills, but not necessarily because of us, is that 2016 was a reassessment year in Evanston. I was a little shocked by some of these numbers, but the Cook County assessor states that the median market values of Evanston's single-family homes increased by about 25% in, in three years since the last assessment. You can see some of the EAV numbers that were published there. So, this is a lot of numbers for this late at night, but I think the important thing is that this is about 10 years of tax collections. And you can see that we are right around the 97 and a half to 98% collection rate. It's pretty common to have a 2% uncollected rate. The one thing that has changed in the last few years is that a lot of people are protesting property taxes and, and getting comparable information and getting some relief in the, in the way of refunds. And so that does affect what we collect, because those refunds can be netted out of what the county owes us. Just a quick slide on state revenues. We all know that those state revenues are reduced or flat. State continues to underfund the budget. You know, so we just wanted to kind of give you an idea of what the other revenue aspects are when we talk about taxes, which are our biggest revenues. One thing I will tell you, I, I did mention to you when we were talking about the budget, that we were still waiting for a state payment. And those actually did get vouchered and paid in October, so I was surprised. I thought we might get them in December, but we actually got them a little bit earlier than we thought. So that's good news. There's still, we don't really know the pension outcome for TRS portion that we may be liable for. And, and like I said, I thought that the property tax freeze was not on the table for right now, but it seems like it's very much on the table. I meant to look up the specifics, but I believe that it, it probably won't be discussed again until after the holidays, when the next session starts up. So, but it, it's still very real for this year. Just real quick, I don't know that we've discussed TIF districts, since our two newest board members have come on. Always happy to answer questions on that. But when a TIF district is enacted, the, the district goes off the general tax rolls and any increment that's received is retained within that, that TIF by the city. So the, the property develops and it grows in EAV. None of us see additional revenues until that TIF is retired. And then we benefit from the newly added property that, the, the increase in EAV. So as I mentioned, we do have a, a small TIF that expired last year. And we have one in 2019 that's going to be more sizable. So, oh, sorry, that's what I was about to say. Most recent TIF district was the one on Howard Hartree. And so that's what we should be experiencing a flow of in the upcoming payments for the next year. There is what's called a Joint Review Board. If you're not aware, it's a, a meeting of all the taxing bodies. The city holds the meeting once a year, and they do have to do a reporting on all the TIF districts in Evanston, their financial information, what they've spent, what they've taken in. So the next meeting is November 29th. We always do attend that meeting, and they do publish reports on that. And as I mentioned, the, the biggest TIF that's currently in Evanston, Washington National, does expire in the fall of 2019. So again, this is just a, the same slide that we saw at the beginning. Publication dates, hearing dates, adoption date, and then our last date of file at the end of December. And that's it. I, I did want to mention, though, there are a lot of documents in the board packet. And, you know, there are resolutions and, and certifications from the board secretary. And, and those are really just technical documents that are required to do the legal process of the tax levy. There's a, a long sh- There's a long sheet that I think is issued by the State Board of Ed, and it lists all the amounts, and just so you know, that one with all the amounts in a very official-looking format is what we actually do take to the county clerk, and we physically get an acceptance stamp. I run into so many of my counterparts there, people who just don't want to mail that in, and so we literally take that down to the county building and have someone sign off and put their rubber stamp on it, and then we bring it back and file it. So that's what that is, and then some of those resolutions are just required paperwork for the legal part.
And these will be acted upon in our next meeting?
Yes.
So you're giving us-
All the signatures, we'll bring all the documents that you see-
To see.
-in the packet, and then we'll put them in the packet again as well, so you can see them then, and then we'll have them actually printed out for signatures, and then we'll take it downtown.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
I am hearing further, no further testimony, and I'll declare this hearing closed. All right. So we are at our action items, and the first action item that we have is acceptance of the Illinois School Report Card. Could I have a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Plaudet.
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you. Next is the Consent Agenda, which consists of the Treasurer's Report from September 2017, Approval of Bills, Personnel Agenda, Appointments to Staff, Safety and Operations, Change in Status, Educational Stipends, Change in Position, Resignation, Exempt, Safety, Coach, and there is an Addendum.
Move approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Plaudet. Plaudet.
Yes.
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 Abstain.
Savage Bully.
Yes. All right. Next item is old and, well, we've already done new business. Any other items under old or new business?
I have an old business, which actually follows up on what Emma's report. In the wake of the whole Evanstonian thing, I took a look at our Board District Policies on student publications, and I discovered that they're kind of a mess because what we did was, we added a new policy that reflects the State Speech Rights of Student Journalists Act, but we didn't take out our old policy that was not consistent with the new law. And when we added in the law, we didn't add in all of the features of the law, particularly the ones that relate to the procedures that the school has to go through before material can be censored. So what I would like to add, just like to ask the Policy Committee at its next opportunity to take a look at this.
Definitely, the Policy Committee will take a look at that.
The Policy Committee apologizes for not catching that before.
Yes, okay. Thank you. I actually have an item under new business as well. I just want to inform the Board that last year I attended an Equity Symposium that was sponsored by the National School Board Association. It's a one-day, all-day, long day, meeting in Washington, DC, and that is going to be held February 3rd, this, February 3rd, 2018, so I just want to make the Board, the entire Board, aware of that. I found it to be a very productive day. At Pat's meeting, there were some pretty amazing keynote speakers, and the breakout sessions were good. It is, it is a long day, but definitely worth it, so think about that and whether or not you would like to attend. So, the hour is late, so I'm going to skip polling of the Board and declare this meeting adjourned.